Presentations on Tuesday, May 27th at 5:30 PM. First, please turn off all your cell phones or put them on vibrate. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ezri?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
Harkey?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Kibler? Langenheim?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
McGuire?
Here.
Michaels?
Here.
Mitchell? Petrie?
Here.
Quisenberry?
Here.
Richards?
Here.
Lozalis? Schrader? Schwartz? Alex?
Here.
Burksen?
Here.
Carter? Covert?
Brendan.
Kurtz?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Can I have a notice of the meeting, please?
Notice is hereby-
First, I'm sorry. I need approval of the agenda. I skipped over. So moved by Stan. Second by Aaron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Sorry about that. Notice of the meeting, next.
Notice is hereby given that a study session of the County Board, Champaign County, Illinois, will convene on May 27th, 2014, at 5:30 PM in the Lyle Shields Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois, for the purposes of County Board RFQ 2014-005 vendor presentations.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the notice?
So moved.
So moved by Aaron. Second by Stan. Okay, we'll go a little opposite there. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Before I start with our first vendor, there are a few ground rules I'd like our board to adhere to. Thank you. We're here tonight to select an architectural planning team to complete a master plan for the Sheriff's Office operations and jail operations. This master planning is the next step in the process focusing on the jail that started over two years ago. We first hired ILPP to conduct a correctional criminal justice system overview and recommendations. As you know, we've implemented many of the recommendations provided by ILPP and the Community Justice Task Force in terms of additional programs and services. ILPP also recommended that we complete a master plan for the sheriff's facilities. At this point, the facilities committee has released, at the sheriff's request, the request for qualifications that leads us to evaluating these top-ranked vendors this evening. We will have 30 minutes for each presentation, during which there will be no questions, to be followed by 20 minutes for questions and answers between the presenters and the evaluators here this evening. 20 minutes only. Please focus your questions specifically to the presenters and the information they provided in their presentation. We must also try to maintain consistency in types of questions asked of all presenters, meaning apples to apples. Thank you. You each have a set of four evaluation forms. That's these green forms here. We will collect the forms from you after the last presentation. Please note, you must complete all four forms and be here for all four presentations. If not, your evaluations will not be included in the compiled total. And we'll move to the first vendor, which is BLDD Architects Incorporated and HOK, HOK. I assume that's how we present. Gentlemen, if you would take seats at the front desk there. Thank you. Introduce yourself, and as soon as we get started, you'll have 30 minutes for your presentation. Have a seat. Please turn on the microphone in front of you. That way, we can record this entire presentation as well. Button in the middle in the front there, please press that. It'll turn red. There you go. All right. Let me know when you're ready. Okay? Leave it on. Just keep it pressed and leave it on. Is it on?
It's acting up.
It's acting up. And we're getting a blue flashing on that thing.
One more. There we go. Sorry.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, if you're ready for your presentation, your PowerPoint's ready?
It's ready.
Okay. We'll start now. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. My name is Mark Ritz. I'm a principal with BLDD Architects. With me today is Jeff Goodell from HOK, and also Jim Gleason with GHR Engineers. We understand the issues that the county has been dealing with for the past several years and the deficiencies of the current facilities. We also understand from the latest article in the paper just today that the community is very involved in this, and obviously, there are needs that the facilities have. There are needs that are deficient, that inmates aren't all able to receive the proper type of spaces. In addition, you know, cost is going to be a huge impact on the analysis. Our agenda for our presentation basically follows your score sheet. So, we're going to start out with the firm's history and our capabilities. We're going to talk about our key personnel, and then we're going to talk generally about our expertise in the various areas that you've identified, and also touch on our ability to relate to your specific project requirements. And then, if there's anything that we missed, you can ask us more questions at that point. So, this is the slide. I know that it's going to be a long night for all of you, and it may be four hours before you actually score us, but this slide is what we would really like you to remember if you forget everything else we've said. The YBLDD HOK team, essentially, you know, we've all worked together sometime in the past. Actually, GHR and BLDD have worked extensively together for the last 30 years. And, you know, what we bring is that we've done a lot of facilities analysis. We understand local costs, whether it be labor, material, and construction types. And that's going to be instrumental in identifying first cost and lifecycle costs for different possibilities. We have team members with proven experience. In fact, the three main people from HOK have combined 100 years of experience, roughly. They are experts in operational efficiency, and they're going to touch on several of their projects related to that. The bottom bullet, actually, I'll jump down. They are also a leader in jail special needs. They don't just follow the trends. They actually have set the trends for a lot of the specialty things that you see in modern jails. And they don't just talk the talk. They walk the walk. They're currently designing or have under construction over 10,000 new beds. It's important that you, with the team that you hire, that they have the right capabilities. We'll touch on BLDD's local expertise very quickly. Those bottom two pictures are of the Alumni Center and Nugent Hall at the University of Illinois campus. We also did Parkland Applied Technology Center. BLDD actually teamed with GHR on that. That was a lead silver project, so sustainability is very important to our firm, something we're very capable of. We also did Garden Hills Elementary with GHR. That was a lead gold project. And then, the Urbana Park District and the Champaign County Fleet Maintenance Facility next door were also BLDD projects that we teamed with GHR. Neither of those were lead projects, but they were very sustainable projects that utilized geothermal systems. HOK, they're the, they are one of the national leaders in detention planning and design. They've got an enormous amount of experience in Illinois. Their approach is holistic and operationally driven, and most value comes from the planning and design and delivery phase when they're involved. Their designs are very innovative. They're responsive and cost-effective, and also very reliable. They also have extensive medical and mental correctional healthcare experience. And so, it's also important to have the right people and the right chemistry. My role with, again, I'm a principal of BLDD Architects. My role as project manager would be in establishing, essentially, establishing all the communications between the owner and the project team, and to make sure everyone knows when they're, they need to provide information and at what time. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. So, I'm Jeff Goodell. I'm the Director for Justice Planning and Design at HOK. We're a nationwide and international firm, and justice is one of our core competencies. I was actually born in Champaign when my parents were students at the University of Illinois, so I'm pretty excited about an opportunity, perhaps, to work here. In addition to planning and design, I built, as a general contractor, over 3,000 beds for the Illinois Department of Corrections, including work in Danville and up in Dwight and other areas. So, I've got a pretty good handle on construction and constructability issues, as well as on the design side. So, when we put together budgets and so forth, we've got a lot of experience in what in real-world costs and those things. The first job I had when I got out of the University of Illinois, though, was actually at the old Brown Davis &amp; Mullens, which is now GHR, where Jim is at. So, I've worked with Jim decades ago when I got my start. We're happy to have him on our team here.
Okay. With that as the lead-in, we know that I'm not as young as Jeff. We're a local firm. We do mechanical/electrical engineering. As some of you may find my face familiar, I've done a number of projects with the county over the years.
Sir, could I ask you to speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
How's that? Can you hear me okay? Okay. We've done a number of projects at the county over the years, the courthouse, for instance. Jeff, we've mentioned the fleet maintenance facility. We did the MetCAD 911 facility, and we've helped you out with a myriad of small problems in some of your other facilities over the years. So, we're local, and we like working with your people.
A couple of other of our teammates that aren't here tonight. Bob Schwartz has over 40 years of experience total in justice design and planning. Bob is, Bob is an expert on correctional facilities, detention, also courts. So, he's very conversant with the entire justice system. And Bob is an expert, recognized nationally for Americans with Disabilities Act renovations and design, and advises across the country on making facilities accessible. And then Greg Cook is also part of our team, and Greg is the only architect accredited as a certified correctional health professional, and got that certification. His specialty is with correctional healthcare, correctional mental health. And Greg's background, his father is a judge. So, Greg also grew up in the business and is very dedicated to justice facility design and planning. So, we're going to talk a little bit about some experience we've had and how it relates to your scorecard. First thing, you know, again, you did ask about our expertise, and we're going to talk a little bit about what's delivered, but we want to talk just a minute about how it's delivered. And our viewpoint on these projects is to be very collaborative, to work very closely with stakeholders. We have a lot of experience across the country and internationally doing a number of projects, and where we think that could be a benefit to you is working with your jurisdiction and getting it right for you. No two counties, no two cities, no two states run the same. So, it's very important for us to learn and work with you and how you do things, and then bring some examples. So, there will be frequent touchpoints with key stakeholders. We use technology to make sure that our data is fresh and always up-to-date, and it is what we call real-time data management. Multiple-track project advancement, you could be, we could have a sub-team working with Jim on looking at mechanical air handler systems and, you know, their lifespan, at the same time, talking about the medical/mental health aspects of the system. So, we can do those things concurrently and manage that process, but it maximizes your input and produces, we think, exceptional results. And it also, we don't have a schedule. You don't have a schedule right now, but one will need to be developed early. But those bullet points that you see, they're all the elements of the program that have to be incorporated into the schedule. The overall mission, the program itself, design, engineering, security, all the way through budget and potentially, you know, construction schedule. And I think what's important on the graphic is that all, a lot of touchpoints for reviewing budget. Not only reviewing the budget of constructability, but reviewing operational budget. And you'll see, as we go through the presentation, operational budget is a key to successful project planning. Talking about some of the key issues, HOK, we use five different benchmarks. Safety and security being the key among all of them. That is the, that's the number-one mission of the facility. But also staffing, operations, the impact on the community, and the last one down at the bottom, recidivism. We want to do everything we can to work with you to reduce recidivism in the community, reduce recidivism in the county. You've already embarked on programs to keep people out of jail. We want to plan these facilities to keep them from coming back to jail if they've been there. In terms of cost management, the key element in cost over the lifespan of these facilities is staffing. We know that 75% over a 30-year period is for staffing. So, we're going to focus on that quite a bit, reducing post-re requirements, looking for ways to save staff. If, in fact, a correctional officer with benefits is perhaps $50,000 a year, if we can save one time, one full-time position at about a 5.7 rate, that's over $250,000 a year, we'd be saving the county by being able to reduce a staff position. And we know often it's hard to find those folks. So, again, we want to design and plan facilities that you can run with fewer people rather than having to have more. Innovative design is something that's been a hallmark of our history. Rear-service chase, which you see on the right side, that allows maintenance staff to work on the pods without having to be in the secure area, saves a lot of money and reduces contraband in the facility. Borrowed light allows us to have more compact floor plans and bring in ample light to meet standards. Also, PDA handheld access control, thin-wall construction. We did the first lead gold detention sustainable facility in the country, and we pioneered direct supervision. We saw direct supervision was mentioned in the analysis, and so, we've experienced with direct and indirect. We understand the staffing impacts, pluses and minuses. I'm going to let Jim talk here for a minute, but we also understand that understanding operational efficiency is really addressing energy as well. And we walked through the existing facilities, and Jim's got a few comments to make on moving forward.
Okay. One of the things about your facilities is that they're truly 24/7. So, you're talking more than 8,000 hours a year for one of these systems, whereas a typical office system's running 2,000. What this means is, small differences in efficiency will make big differences in how much money you pay for, to operate these systems over a longer period of time. So, we think that there's some serious looks that need to be taken at the existing systems using that as a framework.
And the next, and this will be the last key element we talked about before we get to some examples, staff recruitment and retention. We mentioned before, 75% of the cost of running a facility is staff. It's your most important resource. We know that a brand-new facility that's well-planned and has some staff amenities has about a 10% turnover ratio, where older facilities are about 25% staff turnover. The cost of recruitment of staff in some jurisdictions can be as high as 20,000 per position recruit, and we know the value of their training can be well over $100,000. So, when you lose a staff member to another industry, it actually has a big bottom-line impact on the county. Plus, you've trained somebody and you have to replace them, and whenever you replace them with somebody new, it's kind of a, it's kind of an iffy situation you're going to replace them with. So, we believe in taking some of the money that might be into gross factors for square footage, and putting them into some staff amenities to keep your staff, because it's good for morale, and it's also good for the bottom line of running your criminal justice system. Relevant experience. Right now, we're doing a large facility about two hours away with Indianapolis Marion County. They've been under court order from the Department of Justice for 30 years to do something about their five jails and their old courthouse. We've sat down with them and determined that their operational costs had grown so much from staffing that they can now actually afford a new facility with far less staff, far less energy resources being spent, and actually spend less money per year on a new facility than they're spending on older facilities that they're continuing to refurbish. And because they're so split up, they have huge transportation costs, food costs, medical costs. What you see here is an overall new justice campus, and in the middle is the jail. To the upper right on the site is a new community corrections facility, 750 beds for work release, and that will also include electronic monitoring. And down at the bottom of the site is a new criminal courthouse. One of the contractors involved with the project calls this the Walmart for Justice. And I'm not offended by that at all, because I think the great part about it is they can deliver all the justice at one facility. And we know that the judges, sheriff's department, the folks that run the jail and community corrections will be working more closely together, dealing with the issues in Indianapolis. The project goals are not unlike yours. Overall public safety, inmate safety, therapeutic environment for the medical/mental health challenges, reducing recidivism, reducing energy. Also, it'll include a new sheriff's department. You asked us on the scorecard about sheriff's department experience, and we have quite a bit, not only working with movement of inmates between the jail and the court, but other things, patrol and investigations, crime scene investigation, including emerging crimes, cybercrime DNA, those types of things, vehicle impound, and so forth, all the elements that go with the sheriff's department. In the planning, we're using technology. You've already started using video visitation. Indianapolis is going to use it in a big way. The PDAs, we talked about, the handheld ability to control inmates is also going to save staffing. So, we're using technology in a thoughtful way that doesn't cost a lot upfront, but will actually save staffing, and will cut down on lifecycle costs over the 35 years that they contemplate at the minimum using this facility. And then, this is an example of the cost comparison. You see in the red, the bars of existing costs. In Indianapolis Marion County, they're spending $85 million a year to run the jail right now. This new consolidated jail, we're expecting to be just over $80 million. And so, what that's going to allow us to do is take those savings and do, and help to pay for the new courthouse and the new sheriff's department, as well as the community corrections. So, from the savings, from going from $74 a day for, you know, for the current situation with the inmates, we're down around 72, under $73 a day in a new facility that has over 700 special needs beds out of 3,500 new beds in the facility. And I know that $72 is not that different than what your per diem is right now from what we saw in the study. The next one we'll talk about with the state of California. I was privileged, and HOK was privileged, to work with the federal receivership in reevaluating medical/mental health for the state. The state was in contempt after 20 years of being told by the Department of Justice to fix their healthcare system. The federal government took it over. So, they're creating a new model. And what you see here is a day room, where to the right would be the beds in the pod, and to the left are services for inmates. And in the center part where the furniture is and the control station, you have physicians, you have registered nurses, you have correctional, all in the same place, being able to deliver these services for the medical/mental health and to give them a more impactful treatment. In Los Angeles County, where we're working right now, there was a situation where an honor student at USC developed schizophrenia, and she actually carjacked somebody. Now, the prosecutor in the county could have put her in jail. She could have entered into the DOC system, but they got her into divergence and to mental health treatment, and she's back at school. And that was a case where the system worked to get somebody to not have to put them in the jail system or the prison system, because they'd made a mistake, because they recognized that there was a mental health issue. Emerging trends with correctional healthcare. We know one thing, you don't have any negative air pressure rooms right now. You need those. So, we'll find a way to get that for you, to keep communicable disease under control. Usually, medical facilities are less restrictive environments overall. We want to create facilities where staff and patient interface happens, and multiple, easy for me to say, multidisciplinary treatment, where medical and mental health are treated together, because these inmates typically don't have one or the other, they're both. And so, to be able to get mental health treatment and medical treatment for the same inmates is important. And we talked about some other technology with telemedicine and dialysis to be helpful as well. And on the correctional mental health side, we think creating program space in areas where these mental health inmates can work with your professional staff and volunteers, and be able to facilitate programs like community elements is very important. So, we would look for those opportunities, be able to let those programs really take root and grow. The last project we're going to talk about is Stanislaus County in California. It's Modesto. It's a campus. There's an existing facility to the lower right that's minimum and medium security beds. It's not working very well. And what you see in the middle of the screen is a new facility for staff, and then up towards, up towards the center are new maximum-security beds and medical/mental health beds, along with a new clinic, all put together. And the reason they're building new maximum-security beds is to get maximum-security inmates out of the minimum-security units that they're in, that they're just tearing apart. So, we're going to put them in appropriate space and then use minimum-security beds for minimum-security inmates. We're doing a master plan for this campus. You can see building E is that, is that front door, and building A, B, C, and D are the new units. And off to the right that we don't see is work release housing and a day reporting center that we've designed for the county. So, you can get all of the, all the medical/mental health and corrections professionals on the same campus and delivering a continuum of care for folks that are in the system until they get to day reporting and work release, until, you know, they're just taking a bus to visit once in a while, as opposed to having to live there. This approach to space planning, you asked about space planning and program, is to, and this is a copy of an intake center, is to really work very closely with your professionals and your stakeholders to look at what the intake system really requires, and to go through every element of the system and every post and every required staff member. Because we can create an architectural program around these things, but again, it's very important that it revolves around your operations and it revolves around your staffing. So, we go through this with the diagram system to make sure that we're really making a new facility tight to the way you want to operate, and make it flexible so it can operate in different ways in the future. Keys to successful programming documents, I think, very importantly, accurate cost estimating. We'll spend a lot of time with cost estimating. And maintain reasonable contingencies. Not go overboard on contingencies, but not try to make them too short either. Full systems planning is important, as we talked about with Jim and the engineering system, very critical, that we get that part right in systems planning. An appropriate level of documentation for whoever would do design in the future. And then, continue with program verification and tracking. Always make sure that the plan and the program are meeting your operational needs today and into the future. How this relates to your project, we know a few things about it from the walkthrough and reading the, and reading the analysis. We'd love to have the opportunity to learn more. But we know that evaluating the condition of your existing facilities is very important in this project. Inmate classifications are something that have to be looked at carefully. Men versus women, age ranges, and also, you know, violent versus non-violent, separating sex offenders, and then finding ways to get programming for substance abuse and other mental health issues. Systems life cycles, operational costs, improving outcomes that we talked about. Look at how to combine facilities and operations, how they can be separated, and how they should be combined. Evaluating this against future trends, and then really using this to really set a course for the future, really be a game plan for Champaign County to move ahead with its public safety into the future. We talked about this, about a quantitative decision-making methodology of really taking data and dollars and really helping you, bring that data to you to help you make decisions about what to do in the future. All these elements and the bullet points are all things that would be factored in, in looking at how these facilities would react to the thorough program analysis that was done in the previous study. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Mark.
Thanks a lot, Jeff. Yeah, just to recap, the reasons why to hire the BLDD HOK team, we have the local involvement. Jeff mentioned the key team members and their experience that they bring, also their expertise in operational efficiency, the fact that they're, you know, currently doing 10,000 beds either in design or construction, and that they are the industry leader in jail special needs analysis. With that, we'd like to thank you very much for asking us to come present our qualifications and open it up to any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You're well under your 30 minutes, but we still only have 20 minutes for questions. Who would like to ask a question? Patsy?
Hi. Thank you for coming. If possible, I have two quick questions. One, as you talked about the importance of involving the stakeholders, part of that subgroup of stakeholders are the taxpayers, because they will be paying for this. So, I'd like to hear a little bit how you would engage the public. And then, my second question is, what key ingredient do you think is important so, in two to three decades, that County Board won't be facing this situation?
So, as far as involving the public, it is very important. And so, our, the approach that we use is to, is to work with you, first in a couple of different tiers. There should be a core group, including the sheriff, key sheriff's operational folks, key county board members, that as we work with the larger stakeholder group, as an example, when we would program the intake center, we would want to work with some of the folks that are in intake and talk about the way that they, what their needs are, and be able to program and plan around that. We would take those findings back to the core group, and then we would talk about how those findings work. And then, we would have meetings with the public to really give a fairly transparent viewpoint on where- key county board members, that as we work with the larger stakeholder group. As an example, when we would program the intake center, we would want to work with some of the folks that are in intake and talk about the way that they, what their needs are and be able to program and plan around that. We would take those findings back to the core group, and then we would talk about how those findings work. And then we would have meetings with the public to really give a fairly transparent viewpoint on where the study is going. That's certainly something we want to work with, with the key, you know, with the core group first. We wouldn't put out information that wasn't agreed to by the core group. But I think a couple of things that's important for the public is to help them get a firm understanding of what the current situation is. And that may be through some tours, that may be through some other public meetings to really talk about the shape that the facility is in and what are some of the challenges that come from the shape that the facility is in. Because everybody in the community has some interaction with the criminal justice system one way or another. People don't like to think they do, but in fact that they do. And I think often, in my experience with the public, when they see, especially with some of the challenges of your downtown facility, the kind of working conditions that your staff works in and the kind of challenges they have in managing inmates and some of the cost things, that usually helps the public see, you know, we need to do something. Now, the next step then is to help educate about what some of the findings are and to get input from the public. It's important to have open dialogue with folks in public because as you say, they are the taxpayers. These are their facilities. To answer your second question, the missions of these facilities change over time. What may be, I can remember, and I'm sure the sheriff remembers, when boot camps and supermax facilities were all the rage. We were going to take care of criminals by making them work really hard or sticking them in a hole where they were never going to come out of. And it didn't take very long when we figured out those outcomes didn't work very well. So, those old supermax facilities, some of those boot camps aren't usable. They're not useful. So, it's important that we always keep in mind that the mission of a detention facility is changing over time. In particular, you know, this mental health issue is an acute issue across the country. So, to develop a facility that's flexible for operations and then also to plan for expansion, I think especially when it comes to the engineering systems, to be able to, to be able to plan for that expansion and to plan thoughtfully for where the facility is going to go, will save your colleagues that will be here 20 and 30 years down the road, maybe make the decisions about how to expand a lot easier for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. I've just got a couple of questions. I'll try to keep it brief. The projects that you chose as sort of your predicate projects, Indianapolis and Stockton and Modesto, these are $80 million, $123 million, $95 million projects. Obviously, everybody wants to, you know, step up and hit a home run. But I think we're probably budgetarily and in terms of the magnitude of our needs more in bunt territory here.
Sure.
I'm wondering, we have, you know, an old nursing home that we'd like to look at potentially repurposing. We've got an underutilized juvenile detention center. We've got questions about how to repurpose or reuse or otherwise dispose of the downtown jail. Can you speak to potentially any projects that you've worked on that have been smaller in scope?
Sure. Yeah, we're doing one right now for the Department of Human Services over at Rushville, their sex offender facility, 96 new beds. And we've master planned it for 300. So, we're doing 96 right now. But that's one that we're doing not far from here. And we're also, we did a new facility down in Union County, Illinois, that's a new sheriff's department, first new courthouse in 150 years. When we were selected for the project, they gave us a scope and said, "We have $15 million to do this facility." And we said, "Well, that's good. We can do that for that." Upon selection, we were doing the, we're doing the contract negotiation. They said, "You know, we miscalculated the interest payments. We've only got $11 million to do this." We still got their scope done for them. We still found a way to get that scope done for them on a much smaller scale, as you're talking about. The reason that I picked the facilities that we talked about today is because we thought they were illustrative of dealing with the issues that you're dealing with. But we certainly understand, I know that the sheriff's budget, I think, is, I believe is at $11 million a year, and your budget for running the jails is about $6.5 million. So, these concepts are scalable. Everybody deals with mental health issues, whether you're dealing with 500 mental health beds or whether you're dealing with five. So, I have a, I'll tell you about one project I did not long ago up in Williston, North Dakota. They had 38 beds in the facility. And we, you know, you may know, Williston is at the heart of the oil boom up in North Dakota now. So, they've experienced huge population growth. Well, we projected they needed 140 total beds. And of that, I think they've got a half dozen that are mental health. Now, the sheriff has come back to us recently, said, "I think we need 280." And that building's only been open for five years. But the point of that being though, we were really talking about a facility that is at about 140 right now, it'll be 280, which is not that far off of what your current population is. So, we have a lot of experience with smaller facilities. Again, we picked these because we thought they were illustrative of some of the issues.
Okay, thank you. Next question, you mentioned specifically in your list of issues that you would consider in your, sort of your five-part, I'd call it a triad, but I guess it's five parts.
Right.
You mentioned recidivism, reducing recidivism. Can you speak to specifics there, what you have found works?
Yeah, what, I think there used to be a feeling that all rehabilitation would happen at the Department of Corrections and that what the purpose of a detention facility was temporary holding. Essentially, you got booked, you couldn't post bond, you were in the jail. And basically, you sat there until it was time for trial. I think there's a new paradigm emerging about, you know what? If we've got these folks and there's, most of them are substance abusers. Most of them have mental health issues. A lot of them turn to self-medication. You have an opportunity, even if they're there for a day, to be able to perhaps get some penetration. Whether that would be to meet with a counselor, meet with a volunteer, certainly if they're there longer, to utilize the time. And so, what I guess, so what we've created are more program space, more multipurpose space with the unit, more opportunity for recreation, more opportunity to keep inmates moving and keep their minds occupied, and perhaps find a way to get them with medical, mental health professionals where you can get some intervention, get them into some level of drug abuse treatment, at least even educate them where they can get it. Because I don't think that was happening for a long time. But we now, I think we see these facilities as opportunities for those things to happen. And we know that that reduces recidivism. Even if it's 5%, that's still a reduction in the number of people that come recycling back to your facility. So, we have seen it work by creating some of that space and creating those opportunities.
Thank you. My final question, and I apologize, this may be a little bit below the belt. I noticed in the facility in Stockton, that was a collaboration between HOK and Dewberry Architects.
Right.
You probably know Dewberry is another one of the finalists.
I've got my start there.
Here. And so, I'm curious to know, what was the decision-making process that led to this particular team that you're bringing to us today? And I'd ask both BLDD and you to respond to that.
Sure, sure. No, thanks. I actually started at PSA back when it was PSA. I came after they did your downtown facility. I'll just put that out there.
It's okay, we won't hold it against you.
Anyway, but one of the principals, Jerry Guerrero at Dewberry, and I were colleagues back then, and we're, you know, have stayed friends for years. The Stockton facility was a large project that was a large design build that was going to hit fast. And so, when we looked at our resources, we brought on Dewberry, who was potentially going to be a competitor, and put him on the team. And they handled some of the renovation of the facility. We handled the overall design and planning of the facility and did the larger mental health portions of the facility. But they're good partners. I know those folks, I've known them for a long time. But I'm where I'm at for a reason. I like where, I like being at HOK, and I like the, I like the opportunities, and I think the creativity and thoughtfulness that HOK brings to the table. So, we're not averse to working with some of our competitors once in a while when it makes sense, but that's the reason they were on that Stockton. Thanks, thanks for asking, so we could talk about that.
Okay, Chris? Okay, I have a quick question for you. We've had many of these in the past, RFQ, RFP. We've had a lot of companies come to us. And then we find out later that the construction work isn't exactly what they said it would be. We have a nursing home that we've had litigation for because of problems with construction, manufacturing, whatever it took, we had a problem. In the last 10 years, has your company had litigation placed against you for any shoddy workmanship or any problems concerning any of your projects?
Yes. And I can tell you, so HOK is a firm of currently 1,600. And we have offices around the world. So, yes, absolutely, we get in, we run into litigation. The one that, the one that stands out here in the United States right now is with a condominium down in Dallas, Texas. And the reason that we have, that we've been, that we were involved in a lawsuit in that one is that the owners of the condominium and HOK, the owners of the condominium wanted a certain floor-to-floor height. We actually advised against it. It's in a letter, we advised against it, but we went along and went with the floor height. And then it got built, and they said, "Why did you build it at this floor height?" And it was a shorter floor height than what we recommended, but we went ahead and did it. Kind of a lesson learned about sticking to, sticking to your planning principles. In my justice program that I run, that has, as we talked about, 10,000 beds currently right now in planning program, over the last 25 years, I'm not aware of a lawsuit against us for construction elements. We've certainly been in arbitration, negotiation, but we haven't got to the point where we've actually had any lawsuits against us. And we've never filed a lawsuit against an owner or against a contractor ourselves either.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, Jim?
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion, and maybe this is something not so new, but about the mental health issues and, you know, it's kind of a new thing and all that. We aren't the ones that are setting these systems up for the first time. Is this something that's not new? And how often or how much of this is, that we can expect is normal or whatever? You know, that are proven systems that are going to be put into the jail that you're prepared to work with?
So, I think what I hear you asking is, you know, other jurisdictions have dealt with this and have dealt with this issue. So, it isn't brand new. Some jurisdictions, especially as I was mentioning, in California are really tackling this because they've had to. But it is an emerging, it's still an emerging issue right now. Sheriff Dart in Cook County would say, of his 11,000 beds, probably 3,500 are mental health. They probably shouldn't be in jail. And, you know, because of what they've been arrested for, they're nonviolent. They're, you know, they really, you know, they need mental health treatment. So, I think your study rightfully indicates that the first line of defense is looking at divergence, at looking at ways to keep them out of the jail in the first place, to evaluate people that you arrest, even in fact, if you really need to arrest them. But once they've been arrested, they come to the intake center for evaluation. And should they go to mental health or, you know, can they be released? Once they're into your facility though, once they're in the jail, it's important that people with acute mental health issues are placed in areas where they can be observed. A lot of people that get brought in, you know, really don't necessarily have a proclivity for crime. They've been, they've had mental health issues that have never been dealt with. They may turn to self-medication through alcohol and drugs. And often, those alcohol and drugs issues, if they had a job, they can't keep the job. And alcohol and drugs are expensive habits to keep. So, they either end up turning to crime to pay for it or, as I, you know, as I've seen in your report, a lot of domestic battery, a lot of domestic issues. So, they end up here. It's important that they be able to be in an environment where they can come back down. They can get a good evaluation, and then they can get on a track for treatment that's going to work for them. I heard one jail administrator I work with says, "Rehabilitation starts the day we arrest them." And so, I think with that in mind, to implement the programs you've already identified, and then in the planning and programming, for us to create a facility that helps facilitate that is the real key to getting those outcomes to turn around. But again, we do have examples where we're doing it with other jurisdictions, where we're using day reporting, where we're using work release, where we're using a mix of different inmates. As one example, in that California day room, just a small thing, but there are different ways for the inmates to eat. They can either sit down and eat with a group, or they can stand up and eat by themselves. Because for some of them, they have a difficult time looking eye to eye with somebody else. So, they get the opportunity to eat in a different way. And then perhaps then, they can be integrated back into the population in a different way. So, sort of a one-size-fits-all doesn't necessarily fit all. So, I guess those are some of the lessons, those are some of the examples. And if, and if you hire us and we can work with you, we've got plenty more that we'd like to share with you. And again, find the right things that work for Champaign County because this isn't a new thing, but it is kind of a new thing. People across the country are dealing with this issue right now.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Gary, then Dana.
Thank you. We have an immediate inmate housing by classification issue as well as long-term housing, office booking, evidence and supply, storage issues. Do you believe this assessment should focus on the immediate needs as well as the long-term needs? Or is it your belief that the focus should be entirely on long-term needs involving a major construction project?
No, I actually believe you have to consider all those things. And I think what we would do, and this is, this is similar to a project I did with Department of Homeland Security at their different detention facilities around the country, is to do the assessment and then categorize the needs on an A, B, C, D basis. What, what's an immediate thing that needs to get triaged right now? What are some immediate issues? And what would that, you know, what would that funding, you know, what would the requirement be? In some cases, it doesn't cost any money to make some changes. It's just a policy thing. But sometimes, some architectural or construction thing needs to happen. So, we would evaluate all of those needs and then categorize them by short-term, medium-term, and longer-term. And I think the important thing is, as you address the short-term, think about the longer-term. How are you maybe addressing the short-term need? As you say, maybe you need to change classifications. Maybe there's a way, you can change the way that exercise schedule is. You know, things like that could help. And then just how does that fit into what the longer-team term needs are? You just don't want to do anything in the short-term that would harm your longer-term. But I think it's important, we talked about multiple tracks, to be able to, to be able to evaluate these issues at the same time and think about how they work with each other over time. So, no, I don't believe that, that everything is dealt with by a long-term construction issue. Because for one thing, in order to do a long-term construction issue, you have to have permission from the taxpayers to do it. And that may take some time. And so, it doesn't, you shouldn't create a plan that you can't do anything unless you do a long-term construction. There have to be other ways in between.
Thank you. Dana, then Stan.
Can you give us an idea of how you do your cost estimation? Who will be doing it? And then, in the last half dozen projects, what's been your success rate from cost estimating to, you know, actual project and what it's actually come in at?
Okay. I'm going to let Mark help with this answer. But from the, from the justice side, because we're doing so much work right now, we've got a good, healthy database of what things are costing. The Modesto project I was just showing you right now, that's the one we did the program master plan on. We put out bridging documents for design build. Those numbers are coming in 10% less than what our estimate was, which to us is about right. I don't want to see prices come in 30% less. That means we overestimated things. It's important that we're close to what they're going to be. That's an area that I oversee because I'm involved with so many of these. And then with my background in construction, I've got a pretty good understanding, and I do a lot of design build as well. So, I've got a pretty good understanding on the detention correction side, the cost of things. Mark, though, is going to really help us get it right for the market.
Right, thanks. You know, I had mentioned that Jim and I have done a lot of facility analysis, including analyzing all of the Champaign schools and various other facilities at the University of Illinois campus. Most of what I think our contribution is when it comes to the cost estimating is in analyzing the existing facilities and determining what those needs are. First of all, determine what the needs are, and then identifying the costs associated with those. When it comes to additions and so forth, I think it's going to be more of a team effort in analyzing the cost.
You also asked about more than one. We've had, we've had a good track record with, with a number of our facilities lately. I've actually got one in the San Francisco Bay area though that I'm having a little trouble with. But outside of that, we've had, we've had, we've had very good success bidding here in the Midwest in all regions. Our Rushville project that I mentioned before is, is on track to be within the overall project budget that was established.
Stan?
When you come in and do your study, I heard you say you're going to involve key staff and other staff, which that's great because they're the ones on the front line that probably have better eyesight on what's going on than us. My question is though, when you do that study, how long do you actually think that process takes for you? A month to come in and talk to everybody and get a feel of things? Because every report I've ever seen since I've been here, we hear a lot of numbers, a lot of statistics, a lot of crunching. Yeah, that may work somewhere else, but it doesn't necessarily fit our needs or what we're needing to do and with the limited budget. So, when I hear you talking, there might be a sergeant out there on duty all night that he sees 10 or five things that he knows can be corrected right off the bat that would help everybody, but he never has that opportunity to express it. So, when you're out there, and I'm not saying the sheriff and them wouldn't allow him to speak, but those are the type of folks I think sometimes that are overlooked because they're the ones doing the work. And then when I see some of the areas that we give for the inmates, and yeah, that has to be taken into consideration. But I also think when you're looking at that, when I heard you say about that room... but I also think when you're looking at that, when I heard you say about that room where you can access it through a back wall, the, one thing I hate when I've worked with contractors or anybody is when they design something, you've got to have two midgets with a pole to get in there and move something. And I just hate it. And the guys designing it, they do a good job, but when we got to work on it, it's a royal pain. And one of the things that we've always harped on here is the lack of maintenance at some of our facilities because you really can't because of the way they're designed or because the equipment gets obsolete and it's not easy to work on. So those are the things that I'd like to hear, that yes, we're going to look at that. It's going to, like Patsy asked in the beginning, we don't want a county board 20 years from now sitting down going, oh gee, the thing's broke. What the heck were they thinking unless we build another or do something? So those are the issues. And again, I go back to those frontline people. Some of them have been with the county for years, they see things every day. So I was hoping that the study would take a little longer with those folks. And am I on the right track?
Definitely. And I brought back up the picture of our utility chaise, because that was developed by working with staff over the years. And you can see, you don't need to be a midget to work in there. You may need a ladder, but you're not going to need, you don't need to be a midget. But so you can see, it's, you know, it's well-laid out, and there's space to pull parts. And often if there's, you know, because inmates do abuse toilets, so if there's a leak, it'll be back in this chaise where there's drains rather than out in the day room. So, you know, what you're used to with those little triangular chaises, you know, we don't like to do those. We think we've done a better one, but we still don't like to do those. When you talk about talking with line staff, it's more really, it's more than a month process. It takes, you know, it takes about 90 days to really start to get this all right. And the reason for that is because we talk with folks that are the line staff, we talk with the administration, we talk with other folks. It takes a little while for new concepts to start to seep in and to start to be considered. I've had folks ask, well, how fast could you do this study? I could do this study in about three days. It probably won't be what you want, but I could do a study lightning-fast. The important part is that I've got your understanding and buy-in, and that takes time. And I really believe in when we do programming meetings to stop frequently and ask folks, do you understand what's going on? What questions do you have? And let people get their questions out. Because what we find, you know, we're dealing with folks that aren't planners and architects. They don't do this all the time. They may not understand a drawing, but they don't want to tell you they don't understand the drawing because that's not the world they live in. So we like to stop and say, look, how, you know, does this make sense? And if it doesn't, we'll spend all the time we need to to explain it and to make sure everybody's on the same page. Early in my career, I did a jail where we did a control station, and it was all laid out, the drawings were perfect, wonderful. And the folks we showed the drawings to had no idea what we were showing them. And when it got built, they said, what the hell did you build me here? I learned that lesson early on in my career, and I've endeavored not to repeat it. Because it's important that the folks that are going to use the facility and live with it and pay for it really understand very well what they're getting into. Not just the final, not just the final facility, but the whole concept behind it.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. We really appreciate your time. And we're going to take a 10-minute break and then move on to the next vendor. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please take your seats. We'll get the next presentation going. Hi, good evening. You know how to use the, just hit the buttons in the front, and I'll turn red on you. There's a button in the middle. There you go. And the other one. All right.
Testing, one, two, three?
That's fine. You'll have 30 minutes for your presentation, and then question and answers after the presentation. Okay? Shoot, names, and let's go.
My name is Jim Matarrelli. I'm a principal with Dewberry. And we brought, why don't you just go ahead and?
I'm Paul Boland. I'm a mechanical engineer with Henningman Engineering in, here in Champaign.
I'm Paul Boland. I'm the office director and mechanical engineer with Henningman Engineering in Champaign.
I'm Mark Goldman. I'm a justice planner with Mark Goldman and Associates.
And behind me is Carrie Mayer, who's an architect with Dewberry as well. Thank you very much for having us here. Our first slide kind of shows that we're sympathetic and supportive of the county's justice values. It's something we're used to working with, with counties across the country. So thank you for that. Next. What we've done is organized our agenda, our presentation around the selection criteria that you mentioned in your RFP, and also in your notification that we made the shortlist. We intend to show you through our agenda that we're going to hit all those, all that selection criteria, and we hope that you find that we are indeed the top one in each category. Next. The team that we've selected really is a team of experts. In addition to the Dewberry folks, we have, we've got Mark Goldman here, who's a justice consultant. We have Ken Ray, who is also a justice consultant, who is an expert in operations of sheriff's facilities, as well as a medical and mental health consultant across the country. We, the reason Carrie is here is Carrie has worked with me for 20 years on justice architecture and will be helping me through the architectural portion of it. And the intent is, as we work very closely with your committee and with the county board, we really intend to bring more than the sum of the three parts of our, our major parts of our team. So it's one plus one plus one is three plus. So hopefully that will come through in the presentation as well as, as well ultimately in the project. Next.
Carrie, would you like to say a few words about the Dewberry firm? Here.
Hi, I'm Carrie Mayer, and get very happy and excited to be here in Champaign to present our, the history of our, not the history, the whole history, but present our firm and tell you about the good things that we can do for you. Again, we are a national firm. We are nationally known for justice work, but we are, Champaign County is in the lucky position to be that Peoria is only down the road. I've done many, many projects along the whole I-74 corridor, and I'd love to add Champaign County to that. We have, we're a full-service architectural firm and engineering firm, but we also have our own technology and security electronics group. And they do work with us very well, and it's easy, and it's well-coordinated, and it works to the county's advantage.
Again, I'm Mark Goldman, and I've been in and out of jail since 1970. Early in my career, I worked in the justice system in a jail and three county work camps for two county probation departments. So I have a lot of hands-on experience. And later went back to school in architecture, and ever since 1980 have been doing nothing but plan justice facilities. I've worked all over the country, including with four other counties in Illinois, focusing on needs assessments, master planning, facility evaluations. We do a lot of work for the National Institute of Corrections and the Bureau of Justice Assistance, also part of the Department of Justice. And written three books, or co-written three books that were published nationally about planning jails.
And again, I'm the director of the project, but also I've spent my entire career doing justice projects just like this, or at least county jail projects very similar to this. With that?
I'm Paul Boland. We would hope to do the planning for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and process piping systems. I'm with Henningman Engineering. We're headquartered in Champaign and have been here for 53 years now. We have 106 engineers throughout seven offices across the Midwest. That breadth gives us a lot of criminal justice work experience throughout the Midwest. We're currently working on projects from Pine Ridge, South Dakota, several projects for Illinois Department of Corrections. And with this master plan project, I see a unique opportunity here to focus on the sustainability of the project, but also the reducing the operational cost of the building. We're very focused on energy conservation, and we've done several jails. Our Pine Ridge Jail that's under construction now is a full ground-source geothermal project. I don't know that that would be appropriate here. But our methodology is, we look at several different options and then perform a full life cycle cost on those. So we're certain to pick with your guidance the one that reduces the long-term operating cost of the facility.
Ken Ray was not able to be here today, but his 36 years of experience has been direct, hands-on experience with county. He's been a jail administrator. He's a board-certified mental health professional, and he was law enforcement chief deputy. So he's, he knows the operations of not only jail, but sheriff's department. He's been a consultant with NIC. He's been a court monitor. So he's very familiar with the kinds of things that, issues that we'll be dealing with on your project. Next. This just shows for over, for almost 30 years, we've had in-house security technology services that we've been involved in. So we not only do master planning from an architectural point of view, but we do master planning from a security and technology point of view for jails and sheriff's offices. So we bring an awful lot to the table. We've got a very experienced team that's been working together for well over 20 years. We, not only because of the time last week where we toured your facilities, we have a good understanding of what you, of what your situation here is in Champaign. We actually were the architect of record for the original downtown jail. And we think that actually brings something to the table. Not only was that a state-of-the-art facility in 1980, it, we recognize that it did have a certain capacity, but we also recognize that it's obsolete and inappropriate and inefficient for the needs of a jail today. But we do, we also know that the sheriff's office downtown needs more space and it needs updating. But there are some things that actually work pretty well there. We think that one of our challenges is going to be how to best either utilize that downtown facility for something, which might be the sheriff's department. If it's not the sheriff's department, we probably have more knowledge of that facility so that we can determine the best use of that facility in the future, and even if it's only to sell as a function of what to do down the road on that site. Next. So we've taken a bunch of pictures. I'm going to go through these very quickly. We understand that there's issues related to those, to the way that the existing configuration of the jail. We've certainly done 35 years of work since then and know the state-of-the-art of jail today. Next. 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 We can go through these pretty quickly. We understand that there's a desire, probably a mandate, to have the jail facility in one location. For the size of county you are, it makes no sense at all to have, to split the jail operation in more than one location. The only issue as we see it is if there's a possibility of utilizing that facility for sheriff's administration and compare that to relocating the whole sheriff's department somewhere else, out here in this campus or at the jail. Next. Interesting, one of the overall needs for the new jail or for the study is to develop additional program space. Interestingly enough, the downtown facility probably has more program space than the new jail in some fashion. You've got one classroom in one location, you've got several in the other. It's the correctional piece that doesn't work in the old jail, not the program piece. Next. More areas that obviously are underutilized downtown, but, next. Next. And little by little, the sheriff's department, the sheriff's offices have taken over space because there is a tremendous need for additional space for the sheriff's offices. This is now the squad room, was originally a video courtroom. I'm sure you know that. Next. A lot of space has been taken over, something that storage used to be, used to be work release. Next. 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 Indoor and outdoor recreation, probably something that needs to happen eventually, or at least planned, master-planned at the satellite jail. Nice to have a place to go even in the winter. Next. Interestingly, the training area is actually the mechanical room in the existing facility. So those, every inch of space is being utilized to its maximum on that downtown site. Next. Next. So we don't, we didn't have, I think in the booklet that you have, this sheet is in there that shows all those slides. Next. So when you really study the floor plan of the existing downtown jail and the new one, you can get it under, you get a feel for what might be, might work, either in combination with remodeling and/or, and/or expansion of that site to optimize the use of that building into the future for something, whether it's for the sheriff's department or for a new use, a new development. Next. Next. Now, on the other side of the coin, you've got the satellite jail, which built in 1996, a capacity of 182. It is expandable, it is efficient, used as a jail, but it does lack special housing. We know that's one of your prime concerns, including medical and mental health. And we're going to quickly go through these slides as well. Next. 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 We got a feel from the tour, what works well, what maybe doesn't work as well that needs to be dealt with as the master plan is developed. Next. And you can see the floor plan. We understand there's, there is a way to expand the facility to the east, which is straight up on this floor plan. But there's also areas that it could expand to the south, which is to the right on that floor plan. So our challenge is to develop options that not only look at the functional and operational approaches to those options, but also the cost, and to develop that cost with you so you can make good decision-making throughout the master planning process. Next. We've got an overall approach, which is, involves a lot of interaction with either the committee, the board, however you determine you want to craft, the executive committee, whatever will work very closely with you to determine how this project would move, we'd move forward together. There's a whole series of overlapping tasks. Mark is going to talk about, as the planner, how he would develop space programs and detailed information, and then we would take it from there and develop master plan options, which involve a square, or bubble diagrams and options on the site. We always have this balance between form issues, functional issues, and cost or value. So one of the things we do throughout the process at each step of the way is we work with, we develop cost estimates so that you can make good decisions.
Okay. Like Jim said, we, our process always, and we've Like Jim said, we, our process always, and we've, we've, both of our firms, all of our firms have worked with counties throughout the country. The way for this to work is to heavily involve the county board, people in the justice system, citizens, other interested parties, all through the process, not to provide any, not to do the study and then come up with surprises at the end. To have an integrated process that involves all parties is the only way to come up with options and then analyze the options and test the options and cost the options out so that they're the best for the county. Every county is different, but we all bring skills and experience that we will apply here. We will spend a lot of time onsite in discussions, reviewing and analyzing data, but first, move on to the next. We will build from previous studies. We appreciate you sharing with us the ILPP report and the previous NIC study. We know that you're ready to move on. You don't want to over-study. You do want to study everything thoroughly, but you don't want to keep on studying the same things over and over again. So we pledge to build from what's done previously. And we know that one optional service is to develop projections and we have a lot of experience in doing that. We'd be happy to do that. Or if you'd rather us go with certain numbers, we're happily go with that. We, you know, we understand like ILPP pointed out to you that counties can manage how many people are in their jails more than many counties recognize. There's many things that can be done and we applaud Champaign County for already integrating a lot of the suggestions that others have made through the years and having an array of alternatives to incarceration and trying to limit who's in jail. And your population data that we have seen supports that, that your numbers have been very, fairly level. They haven't been going up thanks to all these other mechanisms. We've mentioned costs several times. What many of you know and probably other consultants have told you the same thing, that the biggest cost to pay attention to, certainly construction cost is extremely important and that those numbers sometimes can blow people away. And utility costs, you know, which the engineers would pay a lot of attention to with all the options and maintenance costs, which also can be really high, but by far the biggest cost is staffing. And that's what we help bring to the table. We've done a lot of staffing studies. Jim will later talk about options, but for each of the options that's developed, we, a lot of our attention will be looking at staffing implications and therefore operational cost implications because that is the biggest cost that the county's going to be facing We will, again, build from what you've done before. We analyze data. One of the big questions is even if you don't build more beds, what kind of beds are most appropriate? What's really needed? We know from the previous reports and the RFP that you need special needs beds. Well, we will work with you to help define that and help quantify that. How many beds for mentally ill versus medical beds versus segregation beds, geriatric beds? That's another population that you probably know is growing along with mentally ill. And again, what you're experiencing with special populations is, as you probably know, not unique. It's happening all over the country. So we will help you figure out how many beds of each of these types for males and females are needed. At the same time, building, we're building to our options, some flexibility. You need flexibility because of course, a lot of elements change over time and nobody, even the best statistician can't predict exactly what the composition's going to be 15 or 20 years from now. We do our best, but there's, it's still better for everybody to have flexibility. These are some examples from, well, some of the data's from here, some of it's from other counties. With the sheriff's office too, we will, we will look at staffing data and workload data and that will help determine how much space is needed over time for the sheriff's office. Like Jim said, we, you've done a great job now making use of existing space, but we know that you need more space and that will be driven largely by the number of staff in each division and the types of requirements that the staff have in each department. Then some other examples of what data looks like and some of the things that we'll be looking at to help determine space needs and bed needs. One of the first things we'll be doing as far as bed needs is, as that chart on the right shows, is defining what you want as your categories. You can see that with some counties, it could be as many as 18 or 20 different categories and smaller counties sometimes group some of those populations together, but we'll help you define, rethink your classification system and what populations really need to be separate from each other, both for males and females. From this, we'll start developing space lists, what we call facility programming or architectural programming for every function, both within the jail and within the sheriff's office. And it will be based on functions, activities that happen in each space, how many people, what kind of furniture and equipment they need. And we're do room data sheets like what's on the left that just, that provides the architects with more information about what the particular requirements are for each space, whether it needs, for instance, to be able to view into inmate areas or not, if it has special acoustical or mechanical requirements and so forth. And with Jim and Carrie, we'll start developing bubble diagrams like you see in the middle of this slide that show the relationship between spaces and, you know, for instance, with intake is a good example, intake and booking. We look at what your flow is now and what might a more efficient flow be that might be even more staff-efficient while still being safe and secure and locate the spaces appropriately so it works for the flow, but also separation of inmates that need to be separate from each other, you know, to keep people from leaving that shouldn't leave. What happens in some jails is some people leave through while other, while some inmates are being brought in, other inmates try to get out that way. Well, we're helped plan the flow so that that cannot happen.
You have five minutes, gentlemen.
Thank you. So as we, as we take those bubble diagrams, we will start to develop little sketches that are a little bit further along than bubbles so that you really get a sense of how the space is going to work and how those options will turn into schematic design in your next phase. So we'll try to transition that and we will develop options. This matrix is a good matrix that will indicate how we would take, how we would evaluate those options relative to cost, relative to a whole series of things that, advantages and disadvantages. And it's just a way of helping us provide you with the data that will help the decision-making process. I know we don't have a whole lot of time, so we'll, let's move on. Let's, we may want to shorten these a little bit.
Sure. Just some quick examples of similar projects of expanding a jail and sheriff's offices for other counties. The next three are all in Illinois and Dewberry and myself recently started working on a similar project to yours for McLean County.
Next, let's go through this more. I think only part of these slides are in your booklet, so let's go, go, next, 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 next. This shows the result of a master plan for a large county in Florida where we worked very closely with the sheriff to not only have an orderly way of expanding a very complex campus, but also we showed how to do it and at the same time replace facilities that were deficient. So we actually developed a multi-phase project and each one of those little buildings has 256 cells, so the new expansion, so 256 per floor. So it gives a sense of at least the scale of this particular project. Next. A project that's more similar to yours that we're finishing up in California is a project, next. Same process is being used. Actually, this, this project, we were hired to do the first phase, but they didn't have a master plan. So we stopped everything and said, we're not going to really go any further until we know what the master plan is so that you know how this building ultimately needs to function. Next. And as you can see, that the purple part was the first phase, but there was, as we analyzed the existing floor plan, there were big, there were big pieces of the puzzle of the existing building that really didn't work very well and we needed to know how those, the pieces that weren't part of phase one were eventually going to be handled. One was intake, there was a need for a new intake in Sallyport area, which was kind of in the, sort of that sort of crotch area in the middle of the building. Everybody backed in there and came out and it was a mess, but it just didn't happen to be what they called phase one. So we had to, we first decided, how are we going to solve the, that Sallyport, even though it wasn't going to be in this phase, how are we going to do that and how are you going to, they had a series of deficient buildings, the little building off to the right there was a metal building that was almost half their population and eventually they knew that had to go away. So how are you going to make this all work in a master plan? Next. So we started to look at how you could do that or relocate the intake and entry Sallyport. We knew where the ultimate kitchen was going to be even though there was some piece of phase two or phase one that was some storage for an existing kitchen. Next. So anyway, we looked at what, way down the road, what their, they had a, they had a study, a forecast that said that ultimately they were going to be anywhere from 600 to something. We said, well, all we're doing is provided, providing phase one, which gets them to 390 beds, but we need to know how to ultimately get there. So that's what our master plan did and it showed how over a long period of time, they could ultimately get to the master plan and they were committed.
Gentlemen, that's 30 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to go to questions now from the board and our other, Patsy?
Yes. Thank you very much for your presentation and you laid a very solid foundation for my two questions. My first question, you mentioned engaging the citizens. If you could talk a little bit more, expand on that, how you go about doing that. And my second question, which you really can't answer since you did the downtown jail, what key thing would you recommend to us now so that the county board in two to three decades is, excuse me, not in the same situation we are presently in? Thank you.
I'll start with the first one.
Could you move closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. And this was in, here's an example and done at other places too. In DeKalb County, here in Illinois, we had a number of public meetings throughout the county to make it even more accessible for citizens to come. We had a series of public meetings where we would present what we were doing. We would entertain questions. That was one thing, the series of meetings early on in the project and then as we went on, we had more public meetings to keep people posted. Another thing that we've done with numerous counties is contribute to their website to write a project update. And when desired too, we provide our email addresses and citizens can send us questions that we respond to or comments or suggestions. We also have been open to being interviewed by TV reporters. In McLean County, I was on the radio the first time I was there, those sorts of things. We realize it's important to build public support and all those mechanisms can help it. We're very open to do all of that here in Champaign.
On the second part of your question, I think the most important thing for any project that we do and frankly, any project that we've done is to leave the door over, open for expansion. So that's probably the biggest single thing to not repeat, a situation where you can outgrow a particular site. So now, I'm not going to talk too much about the past, but in terms of now, you wouldn't want to do some, that's why the master plan is so important. You wouldn't want to do something now that would avoid giving you options in the future. So even though we know that the building is set to expand to the east and that may still be the right way to go, depending on how many beds and so forth, we end up providing for the new, for the special needs housing and so forth, you may actually want that to go to the south so that you maintain the options to the east. Because that's going to double the size of your jail going to the east. We know that you don't need to do that now. Probably in retrospect, it would have been nice to know that how the downtown jail was going to be expanded in the future. We had kind of an idea about it and it was kind of just toward the north, but it was never defined enough for people to actually do that at the time. I think what kind of undid, that created more of the problems is the split between two sites. There may not have been a good solution downtown, but splitting it was not, was probably not the right answer.
Another thing that we could do if you wanted us to, although it's not currently in the scope of work, is work even further with you to help control the bed need numbers by studying even further alternatives to incarceration and helping you expand those if you wanted to. We know that you have a wide array now, but if you wanted more mechanisms to help control the numbers, we could do that too.
Astrid, microphone.
You say your visiting is virtual. Is there provision in any of your places for parent-child visits to be see and touch?
Well, historically, the projects that we do today have both. I mean, there's an awful lot of video visiting, that's very common, it's state-of-the-art, but you still, it doesn't replace the need for contact visiting of some kind, whether it's just attorneys or it's families or whatever. That's, it's an operational issue that needs to be, that needs to have an option to be, to allow it to happen. And right now, you don't have any options because you don't have any space.
And that's partially driven by what's appropriate and what Champaign County wants. We've done all kinds of different visiting situations, so that's, we mentioned options a number of times in our presentation and a number of times in our presentation, and, and we'd, we'd help explore different visiting options, and, uh, like Jim said, you know, likely wind up with it, with several different types of, of visiting situations.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've just got a couple. Um, I appreciate you sharing this project, this, uh, Yuba City-Sutter County project, because I think that's, seems to be along the scope of the project that we're looking at here. It was more of a repur, more of a repurposing, more of a finesse project, rather than a big greenfield, you know, thousand jail, thousand-bed jail construction project. Uh, one of the challenges that we're, the challenges that we're going to face here, obviously, is cost, and we know that there are deficiencies in both the downtown and the satellite facility, there's some talk about efficiencies of consolidating the two. We have some other facilities that are potentially in the mix, we've got a juvenile detention facility that's underutilized, we've got an old, uh, old county nursing home that could potentially be reused. I'm wondering if you can speak to any projects that you've worked on, which were, rather than new construction, which were more, uh, repurposing, uh, remodeling, rehabilitation projects? And if you want to address, uh, the potential to repurpose the satellite jail for a direct supervision model, I'd appreciate hearing that, too.
Uh, I think a, a good answer for at least, uh, the complete renovation project is not, is just down the road in Decatur. We did the, the new Decatur police station, which was repurposed into a, uh, in a, in an existing, um, uh, office building that was, that was, uh, was actually the old, uh, Borg Warner Building, or something in Decatur. And that, that, uh, we actually have a ribbon cutting tomorrow, that's, that's opening. So, it was completely, uh, now, it was gutted, but it was, it was, it was, uh, a facility that had storage and, and, uh, labs and all kinds of stuff, that we completely repurposed as a police department in that case. Uh, and I think, uh, finding a way, I'm going to kind of, finding a way to do something with the existing building downtown, I think is, uh, is going to be an interesting challenge, and I think there will be options, that, that, whether it ends up being for the, for the, for the law enforcement, or for something else, I think there are things that could be done that make it, uh, give it an advantage, uh, for developers, whoever uses it down the road. Mark, do you want to hit the, the direct supervision?
Yeah, so, um, Jim, um, has, has been in the facility, I've just looked at the plans, but from looking at the plans, it looks like, uh, some of the walls probably could be removed, and, and the units on both, the, the, on both sides probably could be opened up and become direct supervision. As, as you know, the, the big worry with direct supervision is, if the units are, are too small, let's say, like twenty beds, then it becomes too staff inefficient, but if you, but you, you have enough beds on both sides, that those could be two, two, um, two direct supervision units, or, or, you, at the most, um, three or four, and that's something that we'd be.
The issue is staffing, I mean, that's the balance, is, is trying to.
Right.
Okay, thank you, and then my, my other question, um, there are four firms listed in the proposal, uh, when I look at that, of course, I instantly think, you know, who's, who's driving and who's following, and how do you coordinate? Um, can you speak to what you envision the relationship being among the four firms, who's in the lead, and if you can address, uh, the extent to which, I guess Dewberry, and MGA, and Justice Services LLC have worked together as a unit in the past?
Well, the, the two major players are, are Dewberry and Mark's firm. We've worked together, are presently working in, uh, in McLean County on a very similar project, in the sense that we're, we're dealing with multiple, or, or, uh, mental health and, and medical beds, and, and kind of messy expansion, uh, issues, uh, and population projections, and space program, and so forth, so there's very, it's very similar. Uh, as far as division of responsibility, um, we're, we're the lead, uh, we're just down the road, uh, Mark will be doing the space programming and planning, which is probably the next biggest effort, and then we'd be working very closely with him as it relates to the, uh, the actual master planning piece. Uh, Ken Ray's, uh, firm is more of a consultant, he would be called in on a minimal basis, but, but would be involved with the owner, uh, with, with the users and owners, and, uh, and he would react more to what Mark, Mark and I are doing. Uh, Heneman actually plays a very important role, uh, even though it's a minor role in a, in a master plan, because they did the original building, the, the, the satellite building. So, we, we considered that an important element, even though on a master plan, it may not be a huge issue, because we do have to figure out what the long-term costs are going to be, uh, as it relates to what we're suggesting in terms of master planning options. And even as it relates to the downtown facility, uh, if we end up doing major, or suggesting major, uh, changes in that building downtown, we're going to need to know what the mechanical, uh, ramifications of that are. So, um, uh, Dewberry is going to be the lead, uh, Mark is going to be a very strong, uh, a second, uh, participant, and to a lesser degree, um, although an important role, Heneman will be involved, and Ken is more of a, two or three times will come and, and provide some input.
And, and, and you've worked with Mr. Ray before on other projects?
I have not, but, but Mark has.
I've worked with him, uh, four or five times.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a quick question, uh, too quick, right, then, McLean County, you say it's similar to us, what's the cost of that project?
Well, it's, again, it's a master plan project, uh, we don't have a, we don't have a budget yet, we've just.
Oh, okay.
We've just started it, but it's, uh, it's an expansion of, uh, of, well, we don't know yet, because we haven't done the projections, so.
I, I wouldn't ask you to speculate until you have some numbers in front of you.
Yeah.
Um, my other question is, and, uh, I'm going to ask this question of each vendor, um, you guys have been in business a long time, we've had some problems in the past with some vendors, um, let's say, shoddy work, if you want to call it that. Have you had any litigation in the last ten years, uh, concerning, uh, defects, or manufacturing, uh, problems, or, uh, planning problems?
Well, as, as planners, we don't have to worry about that as much, uh, but eventually, you have to worry about that, and I guess the question is, how do you deal with it in the, when, when it's the architectural implementation, how do you make sure you get what you want? And that's more a question of the next phase, but, uh, we've done an awful lot of, of implementation phase work as well, and, uh, and you do it by good specifications, um, and good, uh, good supervision in the field.
Actually, you didn't answer my question. My question was, have you had any litigation?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, it, it, the group that I deal with in Peoria, Dewberry has got two-thousand people, and, and I think somewhere, they have a, a cover statement, and it was probably in the proposal, that said they have, uh, uh, there's no, they don't say they've never had litigation, but they say that there's, uh, there's nothing significant happening at the time, and that's, that's all I can go by.
And, and my company has not been litigated.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions for this group? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you coming.
Did I take one minute, or not?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, you still have some time.
Okay, the last, the last thing, the sort of why, why us, we think we've put together a team that has knowledge of your, your situation, both at the downtown site, at the satellite site, uh, we've pulled together experts as it relates to operations, mental health, um, between, between Mark's firm and Dewberry, uh, we, we, we bring a lot of excitement to this project and, uh, commitment to not only be here through the project and, and work very closely with you, but, uh, we, you have our commitment to actually control costs through the whole process as well.
Uh, yeah, I just thought, while you were speaking, another question on my mind. Um, if you had your druthers' option between the downtown jail and the satellite jail, instead of, would you prefer to have a one facility at one campus? Or you're talking about, when you repurpose downtown, you're not just repurposing necessarily for jail, you're repurposing for maybe business options, is that, is that what you meant by repurposing?
Yeah, well, I don't think there's any question that there, I don't think anybody that's walked through the two facilities, uh, a community this size needs one jail. I, I think that, that, if anybody tells you differently, I'd, I'd question it, I suppose. Uh, but, so there needs to be one jail, the question then is, how, is the challenge is, what do you do, assuming that the jail is out here with the rest of your campus, uh, how do you, what do you do with the downtown facility? And that's what the options will be developed based on.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions for this vendor? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next presentation will be at seven-thirty, so we've got about an eleven-minute break.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, um, you'll have thirty minutes for your presentation, and then we'll have twenty minutes for questions and answers. All right, gentlemen, please introduce yourself and kick off your presentation.
Good evening, uh, my, my name is Fred Moyer, uh, President of Moyer Associates Incorporated. Uh, sitting to my left is Riley Groom, introduced himself.
Hi, I'm Riley Glemm, Principal with IGW Architecture. Also from IGW tonight is Scott Walker, uh, my partner and the other principal in the firm.
And I'm going to become well-known to you as Jim Gleason from GHR Engineers.
We're very pleased to be with you here, uh, tonight. Wanted to, um, open with the, the slide that you're seeing together, which is about team. Uh, we are a team, incidentally, I think you do know that, and, uh, the first slide speaks to what is a team. Uh, it's a quote that I happen to like, um, from Henry Ford, he said, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." And one thing I would like to leave you with for sure tonight, is this is a team that has come together over twenty years ago, has kept together throughout that period of time, and has worked together throughout that time, and we hope, and at least our clients think, that we've had some successful results. By the way, Champaign County is one of those clients, so you will decide that for yourselves. Go to the next slide, and this, in fact, is our team, you've just had them introduced individually, except that you haven't heard about the two folks at the left side of your scream, screen, I hope they won't scream. Um, Ann Kennett, Ann Moyer-Kennett, uh, is behind me, and she is, uh, the lead senior programmer, interior space designer, interior designer, and all-around designer at Moyer Associates. Um, she has been with me quite a long time. Um, if you haven't figured out whether she is, uh, my young wife, or my daughter, I'll clear that up right now, she, she's my daughter. And to give you a little more personal information, she was born at Carl Clinic, on University Avenue, some years ago, uh, as were, uh, two others of my children, and we've raised four. One was three weeks old when we moved to Champaign-Urbana, so going back some, some time, as you might appreciate. But Ann has been with me for some twenty years, we don't count exactly, but, uh, in that range, and, uh, been a part of every project that we've done. Inessa Yutalis, stand up, Inessa, and say hello, uh, is our senior architect, and, and has worked with us in all of the projects in the last eighteen-some years, uh, in a very primary capacity, in the, uh, development of the architectural drawings, interfacing with the other parts of the team, security systems, and with our engineers and security specialists, and so on. Uh, Inessa is very, uh, a competent person who makes sure we're on schedule, makes sure everybody's doing their job, and the job is being done right. Then, uh, just to evidence a little bit of our previous teamwork, and we're not going to go through every project, uh, tonight, obviously, but I just wanted to give you a sense of that, uh, on this one montage of, of pictures, you'll see, uh, projects that Riley and I have done together, our firms have worked on together. Uh, up in the top-left corner, uh, is the Multry County Sheriff's Operation and Jail Facility that we have done together. Um, on the far-right upper corner, you have the Champaign Police, uh, down at the far-left is the Urbana Civic, City Complex, rather, um, which I go back on a bit further, I, when it was first built in the sixties, I did the structural design for that building, uh, but I haven't done much structural design since, I've been doing the other things you're going to hear about. Uh, good news is, the building has not fallen down, so that is some measure that, uh, I didn't make any big mistakes, I guess, there. Um, the courthouse, of course, you know very well, uh, Ann, back to Ann for a moment, uh, did all of the interiors there, selected materials, and, uh, the coffers you see there by the clerk's office on the right, um, Ann's creation, the lighting, the materials, and all the rest. So, she brings a great sensitivity and talent to that, and Inessa coordinated all the drawings with, with Riley and Scott Walker. Riley?
Yep. Quick overview, uh, of IGW, some of you know us, for those who don't, uh, our, our firm has been around since nineteen sixty-seven, founded by a gentleman by the name of Vic Isaacson, some of you may know that name. I joined in the late seventies, Scott joined in the mid-eighties, uh, we've been providing architectural planning and interior design services since nineteen sixty-seven. We currently have our humble abode up in the upper-right-hand portion of the slide in downtown Urbana, we have a staff of nine. We have specifically designed our firm and keep it at that size, so that we can have hands-on principal involvement on all the projects. Uh, our market, uh, sectors are primarily governmental and educational, and historically, our workload has been weighted towards expansion and renovation projects, probably mid-size, I would say, and I think that may have some relevance, as we would march forward on this project. Uh, in order to help serve Fred's team and be a partner with the county, I would tell you that we also bring programming, master planning, and feasibility study, uh, expertise to this project. Um, services including, uh, evaluation of existing conditions, needs analysis, the development of programs of requirements, and then exploration of solution options to that program, and then, if appropriate, on to, uh, detailed design and construction. The three projects that you see up on the screen right there are examples of us having provided the broad range of services that I just talked about. The one on the left is Cunningham Children's Home, it's their new education and recreation center, which is in a fundraising mode at this point. Uh, the middle project is the Parkland Fine and Applied Arts Expansion, that actually ended up being two additions, uh, kind of surrounding their existing theater, it's a visual arts addition and a, a black box theater addition, and then right down the street, we've just completed the Urbana Early Childhood School, which also has a connecting addition component to it, that connects it back to the Prairie Elementary School. So, those broad range of services, particularly programming and master planning, started all those projects. Um, if I wanted to leave you with two thoughts about IG's, IGW's relevant experience tonight, in order to, again, uh, be a support firm to Fred and a partner to the county, it would be based on, basically, uh, while we're a diversified architect, we have actually developed a fairly long suit in the design of justice facilities, and that comes directly as a result of our twenty-year affiliation with Moyer Associates. And secondly, I would make the point that IGW also has a twenty-year working relationship with the county, Champaign County, and, uh, I think that speaks to our knowledge, depth of knowledge and experience in terms of your site and building facilities and operations. Uh, the box to the right gives, uh, you a sense of some of the projects that we've done, both justed, justice-related, for the county, non-justice, and then we have some other related experiences that I think plays into our qualifications for this job.
Recognizing that we have existing buildings before us, one of our main roles is going to be to evaluate the existing facilities, we're going to assess what's there, we're going to meet those two midgets with the pole that do the maintenance for Stan, and we're going to consider the future potential of these facilities. So, that's one of the things we've done for you in the past, and we certainly would fill that role in this effort.
I'm going to speak to, uh, CRM, CRM is our cost estimator for our team. Derek Bodie had extended Memorial Day weekend plans and couldn't be here tonight, I think you'll find his resume in your original materials that we sent in, but they, uh, he specializes in project cost estimating, or project cost modeling, I should say, estimating and control. His role will be to assist us, the program and master plan team, in establishing early cost models or budgets for any of the options that are developed, whatever they may reflect. Um, and I'll tell you, I've worked with Derek for probably fifteen to twenty years, he has worked locally with me, he knows this local market, and you can see by his resume, he also knows justice facilities. The reason he's important to our team is he is very good at taking a text program of requirements, space needs, and some conceptual sketches, and creating a full-blown project budget out of that material. He's good at early-stage estimating, which is important, because as we develop concept options, they will be certainly, a criterion for judgment between alternatives is going to be their cost. for judgment between alternatives is going to be their cost. So he'll be providing that for us.
Well, now I'm going to introduce and speak to Moyer Associates background. I'll be kind of brief. I know you have material we have submitted previously, so you don't need to have that repeated for you. This is our office. You'll see some indications of recognition that our work has received on the wall. I'll show you where our work has taken us during the course of the last 44 years. That includes work for the United Nations, the international phases, also includes work in the Middle East and so on. But I want to quickly let you know, all those projects have been completed. We're not flying off to London next week, or Paris, or somewhere else. We're going to be, hopefully, driving to Champaign-Urbana with you, not to one of those dots on the wall. Those are all completed projects. We'll even get more specific about our current workload with you at a later point. But I want to just start then, where did it all begin? It began in Champaign-Urbana, and this is not an Urbana citizen, by the way, or Champaign, but it is a member of the public, and it could be any town USA. What happened in the late '60s was that there was a growing concern among the public of the safe streets, the climate of the country, and disorder in the streets, and things of that type. And the Congress was prompted to pass a Safe, I'm just Crime Control and Safe Streets Act of 1968, and specifically a Part E amendment that provided funding for law enforcement and justice facilities. And the Justice Department had a need for defining advanced practices to go with it. They did not wish to repeat old models and old mistakes and solutions that were 100 years old in their origin. They put out an RFP for proposals to develop the research. I happened to be a professor at the University of Illinois at the time, was induced by the Chairman of the Architecture Department to help respond to it. I did, and the result is that the U of I was awarded the contract to develop the Corrections Guidelines nationally. And those are the documents that you see in this present slide, which were produced in a one-year time period, and which was a contract period, 1,440 pages, indexed as a process for planning, not a book full of solutions. And I have followed that philosophy through to this evening, continuing. We don't carry around a book of solutions. We carry around a process for identifying the solutions that are appropriate for your situation, your context, your needs, and what's appropriate to respond to your issues. So our process is identifying those issues, those needs, that context, and what does that call for by way of response. That was the model that was built into those guidelines is, again, not a book of answers, is a book of steps to take to find the answers. And you'll see our collaborative planning model today has evolved from that. Behind me is a scroll which summarizes, and hopefully saves us all a lot of time, because you can see in one picture what would take 10,000 words, they say, although I could give you 10,000 words about this picture. I won't do it. That book on the wall is the first dot down there by Inessa, the very first red square, red rectangle, rather, is the Corrections Guidelines that were produced and adopted by the U.S. Department of Justice as the definition of advanced practices. They then asked me to establish a national clearinghouse for criminal justice planning and architecture to help people use these guidelines, and people who were applying for funding reviewed by us to see if they met the guidelines. Anyway, all that happened here in Urbana. It started out at 1101 West Main, which I tried to find last week, by the way. I think the university's built a building on the property. Where we get a little storefront there. We were a storefront until the second year. We had 145 people by then, and we had to move down on Green Street. Anyway, the clearinghouse goes up through all that red stuff you see up through 1977. This is in, by the way, the last page of your book there gives you this capsule, the summary of this chart. The one, just other thing I'll leave with you on this is that the red and blue have some significance. The red colors that you see are the phases in which there is a, it's pre-architectural, it's pre-designed. It's in the definition of what is needed that goes into programs and of all types, community programs, as well as physical structure programs, operational programs, space needs, existing facility evaluations, et cetera, determining what is it that needs to be built at the end of the day. What is needed, and what defines that? How many square feet is it, et cetera, and so on. The blue is the architectural implementation that is actually going into schematic design and the rest. So, and then down to the right end by Ann, you'll see where we are today, and that will answer the question that, you know, are we off in some other country? All that's back in this part of the chart, and the white space means we're available. So these are all completed projects, and we would like to put Champaign County, right? Well, we'll put it where you would like it to be, any part of the chart. We're not, you know, special on that. So you've got to even get input on that. See, it's a collaborative planning process that we've, anyway, I'm going to move along more quickly. The evolving activities over the, since that time have been repeated testimony for the Senate Judiciary Committee. I was called in to help with President Ford's State of the Union address. That goes back a bit, as you all know, but that was a nice experience. And I was also asked to present to the United Nations the U.S. Approach to Justice Facility Planning and Design. All that has evolved from that first book we had on the wall. We'll go more quickly. Now, this is just a location of all of Moyer Associates projects. As a clearinghouse, we had 3,000-plus projects, giving short-term technical assistance to people who were in various stages of their planning. And then, these are examples on the screen now of completed programs, master plans, feasibility studies, basically the stage that you are at in your request for qualifications. Everything you see on the wall is not all that we have done. There's some that didn't fit on the wall. They're on the floor, and there's some that are in another room. And we didn't bring any of those with us, but you'll see other examples of them in the report. This is a montage, and all we're going to show about projects we've completed because we don't want to dwell there tonight. We want to get into process. But that's what those are. On the next screen, this is kind of an important slide to me because I've said this to many sheriff around the country. If you think we've done a good job for you, I want your badge. And these are badges that have been given to me. It started out with patches that you'll see down at the bottom of the picture, you know, patch collection, which, those are easy to get, by the way. Badges are harder. And I moved from the patches to heavy metal along the way. So I'm not doing this anymore. I wanted to assure the Sheriff's Department, I won't be asking, I won't be asking for your badge. But I still get them. I told that to the sheriff, and they still give me one anyway. So, anyway, here's our collaborative planning model. The red is in the center, collaborative, because that's the key word, and I think it speaks for itself as to what that means, but we'll go through it. We have a seven-step process that has, in fact, I'll tell you, back at the clearinghouse, we had a 12-step total system planning model. It took me a few years, but I got it from 12 steps down to seven. Umbrellas are a little different, but we think this is what makes really good sense. And I'll go through the steps quickly. We'll go to the first one, which is identify your goals. And the topics that can be, and usually are included in this, what we find important to our clients, are confirming the planning issues with you, confirming your scope, expectations, confirming the participants in the process, which can include the entire community, by the way. We did that with the Champaign County Courthouse. We had night meetings, League of Women Voters presentations. We had all kinds of community involvement, so that all plays in. Who do you like to have involved in as this process plays out? Confirm the scheduling needs with you, confirm reporting structure, and so on. So they speak for themselves. The second step is evaluating existing conditions. It has to do with existing facilities and all other kinds of existing. We have techniques that we can use and have used. We may use any or all of these with you, as is appropriate and as is determined with you. We've had a little bit of a lead-in on existing facility evaluation, just in respect, we had tours last week that Riley and Scott and Jim and Inessa and I went on. And we went through, of course, the downtown jail and the satellite, took a few pictures. Won't talk a lot about that, except to say what you may already know, that you have an obsolete downtown jail. I think it's been written up in the papers to that effect over years, so I'm not bringing news that is going to be, you know, hitting you with a surprise. I think you've heard some things about it. But frankly, you know, I could start, and we could talk a long time on the efficiencies that were observed, but we won't do that tonight and not at this meeting. But I'm glad to respond to anything in a question period that might come up. The next slide is about, is just evidencing some of our, this phase where we're getting input from staff and about existing conditions and about needs. These are in different states. And by the way, the upper-left-hand slide I particularly like because you have an officer there in civilian clothes. He came in on a Saturday, on his day off, because he wanted to be sure we had information that he felt would help them get the right facility. Came in on his own time. And that's the kind of dedication and support that we get from the staff in sheriff's departments everywhere that we work. It's been amazing, and it's been wonderful. And that's how we get the best answers, the people who have the rubber on the road, that are, you know, 24/7 on the job, and they're seeing things that others will not see unless you've actually been there. We get tremendous information from them. The third step is the programming phase, which is basically based on analyzing your current and future needs, the demand for services, trends in activities, personnel projections, technology needs, et cetera, and so on. We can go into any of those in great detail, but it includes leading up towards determining the operational requirements. We apply standards, many of which we have written for the Department of Justice, and they are the standards that define professional practice in this field. We determine your space needs. We define facility requirements. And I always put this there, we anticipate change. We seek to anticipate. There's some ways to do that. We won't take time in this brief presentation here to do that. But here are examples of some of the products that we produce in that phase, just to give you a flavor for it, our adjacency diagrams. We find out what needs to be done, what for efficient operations. We're talking about the sheriff's operations. We apply the space standard. You see examples up on the right. We did that at the Champaign County Courthouse, for example. Space program on the bottom right, did that also at Champaign County. We do that in every project. We won't go into all the detail that goes with that. The fourth step is the creative step. This is, for me, the fun stage. Everything up to this point has to be carefully done, meticulous, and accurate, bringing the facts together in a comprehensive manner. At this point, we get creative. What are the possibilities for bringing solutions to the table? So those have to do with program options and various kinds of shared support options that might play, construction options, site needs phasing options, expansion options. We're certainly talking about expansion here in Champaign County. Examples of how that process has played out, you'll see it here. I like to call it getting to the kitchen table. By the way, that phrase was mentioned by the sheriff last week in this room. We had a question-and-answer period, and he said, "I'm interested in getting somebody that I can get around the kitchen table with." We would like to get around the kitchen table also with the sheriff and his designated staff. You'll see that we've done that before. Those are not exactly kitchen tables in this picture, but they're all tables. They are all tables. They're not in a kitchen, but they're somewhere. And here's further examples. And what we're doing there is discovering what is possible together. It's exploration. We all bring something to the table. The point about that is we don't bring it to the table by ourselves. We bring certain experience. We bring how other people have solved maybe similar problems to share, and you can decide for yourself whether that is appropriate for your situation or not. But here's how they've solved it. We also bring it to the table, what has not worked. Other people have tried in similar situations, and what didn't work, so it helps you avoid doing something that won't work here either. Fifth step, decision-making, and that always belongs to our clients. We mentioned this is all collaborative, but this point, we don't get to collaborate. Obviously, you decide. The board will make the ultimate decision on what gets done, and we are only there to help provide information, the data, the support for one option or another, or why we think one ranks better than another. But you ultimately will decide for yourself what is, that will be decided. The sixth is documentation, and seventh is actually building, and so on. But here's some examples of how some of that has played. And the first example you're seeing here is the Mulberry County project that Riley and our firm did together. The point about this slide, you're seeing in red is the control, the staff control center, and you're seeing nine different functions that can be observed from one point. You don't enjoy that kind of efficiency of staff in your present facilities. You never had it in the first place in the downtown facility. That is just not a well-designed facility, which, by the way, came in 17% over budget when it was built. I don't know if you know that. But I was living here at the time. I was Director of the National Clearinghouse, and the architects actually contacted me to ask me to write a letter to the county board explaining that projects are coming in higher because of inflation. That's why it was 17% over. And I answered them. I said, "That may be true, but they're not coming in 17 and 1/2% over budget because of inflation." So I didn't write that letter to you. Maybe you weren't, some of you weren't here then, but you didn't get my letter. Another example, and different geometry, not to suggest that a curve is needed to get staff efficiency. Here it's done with other geometries, and here, again, we're getting more bang for the buck by having staff be able to observe and monitor and supervise different functions, line of sight, direct observation vision, which is always preferable to cameras. Cameras have their role, and don't mistake me about that. One of our research projects for the U.S. Department of Justice was when do cameras assist security?
Five minutes to go.
Oh, okay. Let me get a move past that. Let's keep going, right. Our track record on mental health, special needs. This is getting actually to the near the end. 100% of the correctional facilities we have designed have been designed to promote a safe environment and reduce the potential for suicide, and you can read the rest for yourself. Let's go to the next slide. But some of the things we've learned, we've come in as experts on lawsuits where suicides have occurred. We've come into evaluate facilities to help eliminate potential, and a number of things we have found out over the years is what you see on this slide. Suicides are amazingly easy to accomplish if you don't have the right facility features. Let's go to the next slide, and it just shows a list, and you can read this later at your leisure if you wish. But these are just some of the issues that we have identified in existing facilities where there have been suicide attempts, some successful, and they've been successful with features that you see here. And what we bring to you, by the way, is the knowledge to avoid these situations that make suicides possible. So, in the end, the goal is to have staff efficient, safe, and secure facilities, meet your space needs, adaptable to change, and cost-effective. And that will now bring us almost to the end. If I have time, I was going to review your evaluation form real quickly. Your first question, Riley, is the firm's history. Let's go to the answer. We would suggest to you that we bring a 44-year history. You have seen the experience chart, and you have it in the back of your booklet, and that the recognition of that experience has been even provided by our professional peers. Next, qualifications, next slide. We would suggest that our team members' resumes relate to all project tasks that are included in your RFQ. Expertise is nationally and internationally recognized. In particular capabilities for sheriff's operations planning, as our collaborative planning model's been used throughout the United States, and I would suggest that my badge collection would not be possible if it had not been satisfactory. Our capability in jail planning, we've written the standards that define professional practice in this area, and we leave it at that. In terms of jail special needs, these needs have been a part of virtually every project. Champaign County is not alone in seeing mental health issues coming into their jail everywhere, and we've been dealing with it everywhere. Facility master planning, we would submit that, respectfully submit, that there is no parallel for the experience that our team brings in this area. Detailed space program really is the same thing, and it's a collaborative process that has made it possible. And finally, ability to meet the project requirements, we can refer to a few things, but the reference quotes, I believe, are in the material you have submitted, and we value those the most. They're third-party references. They're not, you know, asking the team, "Have you done a good job?" These are clients of the team. Have they done a good job? And we're very proud of what our clients have said. Ready for your questions? Oh, in two minutes. Well, I want to give it to the questions in that case. We'll give the two minutes to the questions.
All right, we'll start with Patsy, please.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And your presentation makes it very easy for me to ask my two questions. My first question, you did talk about participants, and I'd like to hear you talk a little bit more in-depth how you bring citizens of the community into this process that you're talking about this evening. And the second question, you alluded to our downtown jail, and that it really, over the long term, didn't function well. So what would you be telling us so in two to three decades, we're not in the same situation we are in today in trying to solve our jail situation? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are terrific questions. On the first question, I want to first state that we never go out and schedule a public meeting on our own. We work with you, with our client, and what we do is to make ourselves available for meetings that you would like us to have regarding the public and participants, and the forums that would be most appropriate. And actually, you are in a position to know who is it that would like to be a party to those occasions, and we might not know that without your help. So, first of all, I want you to view us as a resource. We don't get out in front of our client. We don't We don't get out in front of our client, we don't call press conferences, for example, about what we're doing. You might have a press conference and ask us to be there, we'll be glad to do that if you wish, but we don't get out in front of you. I just wanted, that wasn't really your question, but I wanted to say that by way of preface. Now, some of the techniques that we have employed, what we did, I mentioned before, in Champaign County, we, we had meetings that were conducted in the evening. Riley, right across the street from Riley's office, because he's on Main Street, and we had open sessions for the public interested members of the public. It was announced there'll be a meeting, people who have viewpoints they would like to express are invited, I just say invited in a public way, newspaper postings and such, so that then it could be internet and website, and now, you know, various techniques to get the word out, so that, that the planning team will be available at a certain time and date in a certain place, will be presenting a statement of the progress of the work, and what the findings are to date, and the options that are being considered, and it'll, it's an open discussion of, of what is going on, and it's inviting the public, any members of the public, to express themselves in any way that they feel we should hear. And when I say "we," all of us should hear. So that's been, it's been done in church basements in terms of venues, it's been done in any space that we can find to make it available that's, will allow us to have a meeting, could be done here, wherever you just say it should be. So that's the first part. Second question, in terms of planning and designing today for something will not become, obsolete itself in, in two to three decades, which is really a wonderful question. We try to anticipate what's, what's going on. In fact, one of the quotes, one of our reference quotes is from a gentleman named Prakash Yarowatiker, Chief Architect, State of New York Office of Court Management. And he said, "I enjoyed working with Fred Moyer, who always keeps two steps ahead of the incoming technology." He may give me too much credit, but I, I do try to keep ahead of the incoming and look, and anticipate the future, not just technology, but in, in every other dimension of, of what affects our work. But having said that, in terms of planning approaches, we, I felt this for more than 44 years, we need to plan architecturally to allow different outcomes to evolve if they need to, and the architecture can gracefully accommodate them. Now, there are, there are design techniques that make that possible, designing space and circulation in a way spaces are grouped so that they can assume different functions over time as they may need to, not be so tightly fitted to a particular specific function at the moment that it's, that's all it's good for, and that anything else later isn't going to work there unless it's storage. And, and so we, we, I, I've seen enough of that. At the clearinghouse, we reviewed over 3,000 projects, and we've, we have our own hundreds and hundreds. So, and I taught architectural design for 16 years at the university, dealing with some 700 students, one of whom was just in the room, he's waving at me as we came in, Jim Medarelli, former student of mine. The, the processes are there, and I've always felt that, that you, projections work is a wonderful thing, where you, you know, you analyze data and it goes out and says, "In 20 years, you're going to have 308 prisoners, and there'll be this composition." That's based on certain assumptions, and if those assumptions play out, that's going to be a correct answer. Reality is, the assumptions seldom play out that were put on paper when the projections were done. And so you now have architecture that is there for something else that was assumed it would need to be. So I've always looked to what the architectural responses can be to help cover those uncertainties. I, I, I hope I conveyed something there.
Thank you very much.
Stan?
I can tell you have a lot of ownership in what you do, just by your speech and the way you get into it, and that's great, that really is. When I hear you talk, do you personally go out to the job site? Because I think Jim's going to need a little guidance once in a while.
Yeah, I have personally been at my office all Memorial Day weekend, getting ready for tonight. At 5:00 AM.
My follow-up is space. When I have toured the jails and I've talked to other county departments, as we all know, paper just keeps growing, and pictures, and leftovers, and what have you. When I see some of these buildings when they're done, it's, it's functional, it's, it's purty, but we run out of space to put things. So when you're doing your design, do you take a lot of that into, even though they may say we don't need that much, but as time goes on, you got extra desks, chairs, so do you take that in consideration?
We do our best, we really do, and I, and you're, you're right on target, because, and we've seen so many facilities that once had interview rooms, but now they're offices, because as, as staff needs grew, they took away the support space. I notice you have a program counselor in the laundry room at the satellite, and that's, it's great that you've got a program person there coordinating NA and AA, that's terrific. There's no place for this person at the satellite, there's in the laundry room. And that's, there you go.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. You're probably aware that we had a extensive and expensive study of the justice system done by Dr. Alan Kalmanoff at ILPP over the last couple of years. And I, I think the results of that were hit or miss. I think he hit a lot more than he missed, but a couple, a few of his, most of his recommendations, I think, were good and actionable, and maybe some of them weren't entirely on point. But he raised a lot of, he raised a lot of sort of policy and procedural questions. I mean, things like the difference between direct and indirect supervision and the appropriateness there, whether we need something like a sobering center, or a work release center, or a minimum-security dormitory facility as opposed to maximum-security jail space. And, you know, we're in a bit of a troublesome situation here, because all of these, most of these recommendations are beyond the scope of the authority of the county board. I mean, most of these are up to the sheriff, and the judges, and the state's attorney, you know, as far as who gets sent to the jail, and whether or not they stay, and how long they stay. And, except, we're in the position where the facility and the limitations of the facility directly dictate what it is that we're able to do, and what we're able to do dictate the needs for the facility. So we're sort of, I don't want to say caught in the middle here, but we're, we're caught in the middle here, right? We have to have a facility that's going to accommodate whatever it is that the sheriff and the judiciary wants to do both now and, you know, 20 years in the future, when we've got a different sheriff and a different, different presiding judge. I'm wondering if you can speak to projects where you have, my concern, seeing your initial materials, was, it looks like you have tremendous expertise in terms of facility planning, but I wasn't sure where, how much, or the extent of your expertise, taking one step back from facility planning, and sort of addressing how policy interacts with facilities, helping make those decisions as far as, not necessarily how we should build the facilities, but whether we should build a facility, and if so, what that facility should be. So I'm wondering if you could speak to any projects where perhaps the, the project requirements were a little less clear than in most cases?
Wow, that's, that's a, that's a really all-encompassing question. I'm trying to think of a concise answer. We've dealt with everything that you speak of there. We have dealt in Anoka County, Minnesota, where the court had ordered a 135-bed cap on the jail, and told the sheriff, "If you exceed 135, I will come down there and release a prisoner, or you decide which prisoner you're going to release." One of us is going to do it. They had a lot of community programs, because they couldn't put more people in the jail than the cap was, is established. We have, we would, we, frankly, in the RFQ, it did not give us the focus of, of what your scope should be, frankly. Or, I shouldn't say that, it didn't define what you have decided it will be. But what I liked about that, when we had our question and answers session last Tuesday evening, and Van was coordinating it, and Deb was there, and, and the sheriff was there, and so on, what I liked about it was that you are looking for the collaboration of the consultant with you in defining what should the scope be, and do it together. I think that's much better than a predetermined scope and then throw it to a consultant and say, "Here, do this," which may not be the scope that you need right now. And your question points right to it. What is the blend of programming versus structural issues of the jail, et cetera, that need to be, and maybe they all need to be included, by the way. So we're quite open to that, we bring experience in that, to the extent that any of our team needs to be supplemented for a particular, in other words, I don't know that you need to go into population projections again, I don't think you do, but you tell us, and we, I, I, I'm not here to criticize what Dr. Kalmanoff did, and I'm not going to, and, but whether, for example, you have spent money on them, and is there reason to not believe in them, I don't know that, I'm not here to address that or say that. But if you feel there needs to be a further review of that, I do, I, I did get the picture from his study that he was putting out recommendations for the county to consider in terms of developing resources within the community that would affect the need for jail. And there's nothing wrong with that statement. That statement is a valid statement. The question is, where is that, what, and how is that picture going? And that's a very good starting point for us.
I think that's an open question, and I appreciate your answer.
I asked this of the last two, so I'm going to be fair to ask this question of the next two. We've had some problems in the past with some of our facilities, and had some litigation with some companies because of shoddy work, let's put it that way. Your company's been in business a long time, so obviously, you're, you're not immune to litigation, but is there any recent litigation that you would point to that your company is tied up in?
We, we can go back before recent and, and talk about the whole 44 years. We have never-
Glad to not go back 44 years.
No, we're glad to do it, we're proud of it, we're proud of it. We have never, and, we know that people can be drawn into frivolous lawsuits and that with not being culpable in any way. We haven't even had that. We, we have not been considered culpable, not considered, that we've done something wrong. We have not had a, an action filed against us, we have not had an action threatened against us at any time, including the present, and not anticipating the future. And I mentioned in our submittal, on the other side of the street, I've been asked to be an expert witness in litigation that has been filed against other firms, not against the firms, they've been asked to speak to the merits of the arguments involved. I've done that a lot.
Appreciate it.
Your team says it's worked on a couple of projects that have been real concerns for the county over the years, the, the new nursing home with the courthouse exterior masonry repairs, and obviously, when our nursing home was built, we had a lot of issues, a lot of issues with that, there was some litigation on that, there were a number of things that we had to do, and courthouse masonry, I'd like you to clarify when you worked on that, because we, whether that was the recent redoing of what we did in 2007, or the original work in 2007. So I'd appreciate if you guys could say what you did on that project, and anything you might have learned, learned from being involved in those projects that you might bring to this.
Well, IGW has been involved in the most recent masonry repair work at the courthouse. And we were called in to, first met with Alan Reinhardt when he noticed some problems with the exterior wall again cracking, and we talked about it, and ultimately, we were hired to do some work, which is ongoing right now. And it was also time, I think the courthouse is now about 10 years old, plus there were some other more, I would classify them as maintenance items to be done on the court, and we did those as well. Now, with respect to the new nursing home, both IGW and Jim's firm, GHR, we have been called in to do some remedial corrective work on that facility, but neither one of us was involved in the original facility.
So neither one of those projects, you were involved with the original work?
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? All right, we have a few more minutes, if you would like to expand on anything or any initial issue or part of the program that you'd like to explain to us, we still have about five minutes or so to give you that time.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I, I would just like to say a personal note, and that may not be what you were hoping the door, or hoping I would talk about, but I, just on a personal note, I have had the pleasure of living in Champaign, Urbana, and Champaign County for, I think, 25 years of my life, and they are, have been the most formative years professionally. I came here as a graduating senior from Morgan Park High School in Chicago. My best friend told me I was going to flunk out of college, and I thought he was probably right, because I had not studied very much in, in high school. I was trying to be a basketball player, and you can see, I'm vertically challenged, so that, that wasn't going to really happen. And music, I still play in bands, but that was it, and, and drawing, art, okay. But the rest of the subjects weren't that interesting, so I thought, I'm probably going to flunk out when I get here. So I tell you what, I worked really hard when I got down here, and I made all As and one B the first semester. So, oh, I've got to do that again, so I did that next semester. Make a long story short, I graduated in the upper 2% of university in the engineering option of architecture, which made it possible for me to go to Princeton, and I fell a full ride, fellowship, some traveling scholarships in between. And to make, you know, make a long story short, my experience here really opened the door to everything we presented here tonight, including the path in exactly the subject area of tonight's meeting, because frankly, I was working at the time that the Justice Department solicited proposals for the guidelines, I was heavily involved in the north end of Champaign, the minority community. I had gotten permission from the university to move my class to a storefront, which I got the local AIA to pay rent on, Central Chapter of Illinois AIA paid the rent. I was, it's cheap, it was like 100 bucks a month, it was a bad-looking building. And we moved our class, landscape architecture, urban planning and architecture, in there and worked with the citizens of the, of that community to help improve situation in the, in that, in that community. I'm telling you this because when I was asked to work on these corrections guidelines by the head of the school, I said, "I can't do that. I'm very much involved in the north end." And we gave our commitment, we were not just going to commit and study you, we're here to help you. And so I said, "I can't, I can't leave." And he said, "Well, I need you to work on this project." I said, "I'll go 50%." Well, 50% keep what I'm doing going. And so I had, he said, "That's not enough, you're going to direct the project." So I said, "Okay, 75%. Doesn't make a difference how you divide it," because I had two jobs that year, and I figured at the end of that one year, I'm back to the community advocacy depot, which I had started in the north end. Instead, the next year, I'm doing the National Clearing House for Criminal Justice. But my, the reason I'm telling you that is what I found that I was dealing with in the north end is what I later found I was dealing with in prisons and jails. They were the same people. We had gang members walking into the CAD in the north end, and we had all the same gangs in Chicago, or in, in North Champaign, then I'm sure in Arana. And when I got out to the jails and prisons, I was seeing the same people. And I, so it struck me that I've really not worked on something different when I was working with the community. That stuck with me, and I didn't feel I had time to tell you that in the, I didn't put that in the agenda, but it's on my mind, it's something I wanted to tell you about. It also grounds me in Champaign, Urbana, and Champaign County. I bring, besides the charts and these projects around the world, I bring certain background in Champaign County. That includes driving my MG around, doing watercolors. I still have the same MG. It might make it down here, it's 56 years old now. It went through college with me, and it's still, still going. It went to Crystal Park to paint watercolors, it went out and did barns and grain elevators and everything around the community in the art classes at the Architecture Department. So anyway, I'm, what I guess I wanted to finish with, I feel like I'm back home.
Are there any other quick questions? All right, gentlemen, ladies, thank you so very much for your presentation, and we'll get back to you as soon as the program's over in the evening.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you. The next presentation will start at 8:30. All right, we're going to continue on. Gentlemen, you have 30 minutes for your presentation, and then 20 minutes for questions and answers, and go right ahead.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Chuck Reeve-Stek, and I own Gorski Reeve-Stek Architects, located here in Champaign. With me tonight is Dennis Kimmy, and behind us, Bob Dykman from Kimmy and Associates, and Jim Gleason, who you probably haven't seen recently from GHR Engineers.
I think there's triplets in this family.
We are not going to show you a lot of pretty pictures, glossy photos of new facilities tonight. We don't come with a solution tonight either. We can't do that, because we don't know the answers tonight, we don't even know all the questions. So what we'd like to present to you tonight is our process that works, has worked time after time to help solve the types of problems that you've outlined in your RFQ to us. I've given you leave-behinds that show all of our slides, there's room on there to jot down a question, if you like, along the way, so we can ask, answer that in the question and answer period. Van and his group shared with us your evaluation form, and so we've set up our interview tonight in that same framework of those four questions, and, and we'll address things, so it'll be easy, very easy for you to fill out that form when you're done with our presentation tonight. tonight. So that first category is firm history and capability. And Gorski Reeve-Stek, we were founded in 1985, we have a staff of 16 people. We, over the years, have completed over, you know, probably close to 2,000 projects, and most of those have been in institutional nature for cities, municipalities, universities, schools. I have a personal relationship with Kimmy &amp; Associates. I used to work for Dennis about 30 years ago, and focused on corrections and sheriff's facilities and law enforcement during those years that I worked with Dennis. And then after joining Gorski Reeve-Stek, we continued to collaborate on a few projects over the years as well. Again, Jim Gleason represents GHR, you've heard all about him tonight. We also have on our team engineering resource associates, who you may recognize better as Fraunhofer &amp; Associates. That's John Fraunhofer's firm, and John completed a structural study of the downtown facility a few years ago for you, when you were considering maybe looking at options going up or out or however, what interior walls could be moved. So John and Jim both bring very valuable knowledge of that downtown facility.
Kimmy &amp; Associates was started in 1980. By the way, can you hear me okay? Am I close enough? Closer? Okay, thanks. Yeah, Kimmy &amp; Associates started in 1980, and it really started with an idea. And that was the idea, and it's set up in the philosophy, that if you did collaborative pre-designed planning focusing on mission, operations, and staffing as the key to a successful facility, you'll have a better chance to create successful facilities for people. And it also, we found, leads to cutting-edge ideas when you talk about facilities and their development. And the reason I came up with that idea, or used that as the genesis on the facility side for our practice, was when I was at the University of Illinois National Clearing House for Criminal Justice Planning and Architecture, and traveled the country and saw many failed facilities, what I noted most about them was that they did not do pre-designed planning. They frequently just hired an architect and said, design me a building. And often, didn't involve the users, the sheriffs, other people involved in the process. And that seemed to be the consistent, most consistent reason why facilities often failed and did not do the job that they should do. So on the facility side, that was the idea behind starting our firm, that we could actually do facilities that result in better operations, more efficient staffing, and better designs that actually were more innovative, and actually created environments that were safe, secure, and actually more humane for the inmate population. To reinforce those goals, we developed what we called comprehensive capabilities, not just architecture, not just design, but learned to understand the system, got involved in system operations planning, master planning, programming of facility, space programming of facilities, the design and also staffing analysis and operational transition to try to put a whole package together that increased the chances that facilities would be successful. We've been successful, I think, over time, over the 34 years we've been involved in 139 local, by local I mean city or county, criminal justice projects. 111 of them involved adult detention, which resulted in 42 designs across the country. 45 of the projects in law enforcement, which resulted in 26 designs. And one thing I want to point about that project history, that is literally my project history. It's the corporate history, but it's my project history, and it's also the history of my good friend Bob Dykman, with whom I've been working for 35 years. So it's personal, not just corporate, it's not multiple offices, it's one place, one set of people who build up that experience. One of the things we're also proud of, experience-wise, is we were selected in national competition to do research on small jails across the country by the National Institute of Corrections. And that resulted in a book called The Small Jail Design Guide, which is now probably the longest-running document in NIC's history, and is probably the most comprehensive book on jail design that's out there. It's now in its 26th year, and it's third edition. Okay, Chuck? One other thing about our background, that I think you asked about our expertise, I think one of the testaments to our expertise and the success of our work is that we did something I didn't expect to do. We had a lot of repeat work, and we've established longstanding relationships. We have seven counties in the United States that represent 36 of our projects, and also we've had relationships with these counties between 15 and 29 years, working on jails, jail additions, courts, law enforcement, and so forth.
Second category in your evaluation form is assigned personnel. And you're really looking tonight at the team that's going to do the work. Again, as Dennis mentioned, we're not large corporations coming out to find the work and then passing it off to somebody else, or giving to somebody who doesn't have the background and the experience. I'll be running the project, our firm is the lead firm. The left side of this organizational chart, Dennis will talk more about our process in a few minutes, but the left side kind of represents that group that's going to do some of the analysis of existing facilities, looking at some of the long-term costs you might be looking at with those facilities. I'll lead the architectural portion of that, Jim Gleason will be looking at mechanical and electrical systems, and John Fraunhofer will be looking at the structural systems. The right side is Dennis's group.
Yeah, no pun intended on that one, I'm sure. Yeah, I'll be working as a subcontractor to Chuck, as in essence, the lead planner, and will take a significant lead in the concept developments that come out of the project, and also the cost estimating, particularly on the soft side, where we get into the staff and the operational costs. I'm pleased to have with us Bob Dykman, whom you've met. As I mentioned, Bob's been with me for 35 years, and he was with me at the university at the National Clearing House for Criminal Justice Planning and Architecture. And there, he was a law enforcement planning specialist, not a jail specialist. And in his tenure there, he probably worked in about 90 different jurisdictions across the United States, providing technical assistance, much in the same way that the National Institute of Corrections provides technical assistance. We were actually their forerunner at the National Clearing House until our funding ran out. But Bob did a lot of law enforcement work, and he also got into the jail side while there. And then, of course, he's worked in our practice for years, doing jails, law enforcement, courts, juvenile detention, and so forth. And one of the other specialties that Bob's developed that I think will help here, particularly when we look at the older facilities, the downtown facility, is jail security systems. And just like we're worried about the architecture and the mechanical and electrical over there, there's a question about how our jail security systems are, how are the hardware systems, and how will they work into the future? We also have with us Gary Baucher. Now Gary's our outlier, he's our only guy not from Illinois. Gary's from Colorado, and again, you get the impression that we're really old guys, but Gary also is a person with whom I've had a 35-year relationship, both on the private and the public side. And Gary's specialty is jail operations and staffing analysis. He's very good at it. As a practitioner, he was a police officer and a probation officer. He used to be the regional planner for the Law Enforcement Assistance Administration out of Denver, and he was one of the original staff at the National Institute of Corrections Jail Center in Boulder, Colorado, and was their first technical assistance manager, and was a guy that had a lot to do with starting all of the programs and training, one of which you guys have participated in the Pony Program. Gary also has specialties, odd specialties maybe, but he's a specialist in suicide prevention, of all things. But that's an issue, if you're familiar with jails at all, that can be an issue, and how you spot that problem and how you deal with it. And he's also the preeminent specialist in Native American facility planning. So he's worked in more Indian projects than anybody in the nation at this point. We also have, not on the front line, but in reserve, because we really need to talk to you post-selection, should we be selected, about what you want to do in certain areas. But Bobby Husky, you can see on the bottom there, behind the sheriff, Bobby has a Masters of Social Work, and is really a specialist in mental health issues and crisis intervention, and has run her own facilities. She's in the consulting world as we are, and we've worked together in the past. But we weren't sure if we needed or not, because we know we have a lot of capabilities here, including the Prairie Center and community elements. So we were a little bit uncertain as to whether we really had enough, or whether we needed somebody with Bobby's expertise in here. So we'll just make you aware of her, but at least we didn't formally present her as part of our team. Okay? Your third category, and this is probably your biggest category, because it has multiple subparts, is capabilities and expertise to perform the needed services. The first thing, I think, part of our expertise is we've developed over the years what I consider a proven planning process. And actually, the process I'm showing you here goes back to the Clearing House and was the genesis for the NIC planning process. We referred to it back then as the total systems planning process, but there's five key steps to it. One is to establish a common basis for work together. It's good to get together and make sure we all agree on what our goals and our expectations are for the project, as an example. Second step, do background data gathering. We still have to gather data for this project, understand who's in the jail and in what numbers. Evaluate the facilities as the third step, the operations and the staffing. Fourth step, identify needs, create options, estimate costs. And fifth step, communicate recommendations and answers. And I'll talk a little bit now about some of those steps, and then also show you some of the products that we've generated from other projects to give you an example of what you might get out of these things. Now, let's start with sheriff's planning, that was number A, I think, or letter A under your number three. And it's a good thing that we start with that, because there's been so much jail focus, it's easy to forget that the law enforcement section is important too. And we want to make sure we get that right, and at least to my knowledge, there hasn't been any significant change or improvement in the law enforcement space since the building opened in 1980. But we start with workload evaluation, find out what they're doing and what volumes are they doing it. Identify the functions and responsibilities that they have, not only things that have changed in the past, but also what might change in the future. And actually, identify what is the preferred organizational structure of the agency. We found in a lot of cases that the organizational structure actually winds up getting, being dictated by the space and how it's organized and its deficiencies. And so I think we want to understand how you want to organize yourself, if you have, if your chart that you have behind you there, Sheriff, is the one that you actually want. But we want to make sure that the space meets that. We want to identify long-term space needs per component, and two primary ones, I think, here are training and evidence. You know, make sure that we have those kind of components covered in our space estimates. But even though we're talking about sheriff, we also want to talk about jail, to the degree that we recognize that the sheriff is the manager of the jail at the end of the day. We want to identify what those key linkages are, and should the facilities be linked, and what's the advantage of doing so? From a management point of view, from a backup security point of view, many sheriff's offices, they're the backup staff in emergencies at the jail, so the connection becomes really valuable in that sense. And then also, what can we share between the two? You know, are there things like lockers and so forth we can share? On the facility side, the hardball, this is the left side of that graph that Chuck was talking about, you know, the facility fitness and the long-term costs. You know, we know many facilities across the country in bad shape, and one of the common themes is that you have heavy wear in jail. They're 24/7, 365 operations, it's not like running an office building. And that there's, I think, a routine lack of maintenance that I've seen throughout facilities throughout the years, and that piles up after time. But we need to evaluate where you are there, we need to assess the architectural and the engineering systems, we need to assure code compliance, and we need to look at the adequacy, again, of the security systems, we shouldn't overlook that. And I think in the end, what we're proposing to do on this is that we not just do that evaluation, but we assess what it takes to be able to operate your facilities over the long term. You know, it's not just what's the momentary problem with the roof, but what do we need to do with these facilities to ensure that they operate over the long haul? So we want to estimate costs of repair.
Sorry.
Maybe that was a clue. Costs of repair, and also how we might better attain energy efficiency over time with those facilities, if we keep them both open, or if we just keep one of them open. And I wanted to, you know, an example of how these costs can pile up, we worked with Bureau County, Illinois, 34-bed jail. When the engineers were done with their assessment, in order to bring that facility up to grade, it was going to cost them 2.4 million, just on the 34-bed facility. That answer by itself really changed the direction of what the right answer was for that county, by the way. All right, next slide. While they're working on the hardball stuff, or what I call the hardball stuff, Gary, myself, and Bob want to really look at it from the standpoint of a jail, both facilities from the standpoint of a jail operation. You know, functionally, security terms, the conditions of the facility, and also renovatability. If you look at that diagram on the left, what that shows basically is one of your housing pods at the downtown facility, and that was kind of a frustrating design in a way, because it was done in that pod shape that's classic now, but it was done such a way that at the center, where you see the yellow, there were elements that blocked the view. So in effect, you had a shape that looked like something where you could have constant monitoring from fixed posts, but in reality, it was intermittent monitoring, as you can see from the officer in the photo, he has to go from little window to little window to periodically check what's going on. One thing we might look at, for example, if we decide that it's worth keeping that facility, are there modifications you can make to that architecture where it opens up and becomes what it could have become in the first place, providing a higher level of supervision and surveillance, as you can kind of see in the photo above the floor plan on the right, you can see it's much more open, much higher visibility for the officers, higher degree of safety and security as a result. Okay? Again, I mentioned data as part of the planning work. We really need to get data to find out who's in a facility and in what kinds of numbers. And therefore, we need to do things where we can verify that we still wanted classified inmates the way we do, or identify if we want to change those classifications. And one key category where we might want to review that is in the mental health and the medical health categories. The data that you see at the bottom there, where it says mental health, housing snapshot, we actually, in Pinellas County, Florida, it's a million-person county, it's a 3,000-bed system, we developed a healthcare facility with them, but as we talked about it and what they needed to do, we realized that they didn't have effective classification definitions for their mental health and medical health categories. So we actually redefined them as part of the process, and then because the data wasn't there under those categories, we had to do snapshots under those categories to identify the average numbers that fit, and most importantly, in terms of creating housing, what the lows and the highs were that we had to accommodate. Okay? Facility issues as far as mental and medical health, again, this is a primary concern here. And here's just some of the things on this list, not all-inclusive, but some of the things that we look at in facility terms. You know, making sure that we have proper holding and screening space right at the front door at intake. You know, that we allow through our space and its location, ready access to service providers, such as folks from the Prairie Center or community elements. And that when we create housing, rather than the intermittent-style housing you have in the downtown jail, where we just periodically see them and then move away, that we actually have constantly monitoring housing, monitored housing, where we see them all the time and can better ensure their safety and security. And that we create humane conditions of those new facilities that match the need of the individuals who have to be there. We also have to look at specialties like negative pressure cells, which we don't have now for people who are contagious or subject to contagion, and then also restraint rooms. In the overall picture, you know, we need to look at creating effective proximities of in-house health services to the housing areas for these folks. And then when you look at details, like what I, you know, it's one of these details you notice when you're in jails, when they do the meds rounds, you know, is there easy administration of the meds, where you can get it easily to the individual, and you can observe in fact that they're taking them, and they're digesting their meds. The booking intake area is another area that's a hot issue for you, and it should be, because really, the booking intake area is the heart of the jail. Everything happens there. All inmates who come into the facility enter there, and they depart from there. And actually, if you talk to the jail staff in terms of behaviors and what they have to deal with, the greatest challenges that they face usually are in that booking intake area, so you want to get it right. It's also, it sets the tone for your facility, so you know, to the extent, for example, the ILPP report recommended that you have a direct supervision philosophy for your facility, many people misinterpret direct supervision just to be an issue of a housing pod design. It's really a way of thinking about your facility, and setting that tone actually starts at intake. And if you put it in those terms, you make different kinds of design decisions and facility decisions to make it meet that tone. Details, you have to understand the scenarios of operation, and what are the individual steps that they go through to intake someone and then release them, and make sure that you have the spaces that match that, and they're in the right order. And that diagram you see in the middle was a project, a program that we did last year, where that's exactly what we were doing. We were documenting how they had to process people and what the spaces were, and then show how they relate to each other. Okay, Chuck? One of the things you talked about was an optimal plan for housing. I would argue that's new and existing housing. If, for example, we look at an option that says that we're going to put everything at the new facility, at the satellite facility, and involves new housing, it's not just a question of what that new housing is, it's how does it fit into a comprehensive picture? What do you do with the old housing? How do you redesign its use? Okay, Chuck, I think we need to move on quicker. Yeah, master planning, a key thing, I think, again, I'll go back, is that issue of staffing efficiency. It's real easy when we're talking facilities to just think of architecture and buildings. What we propose to do is a baseline evaluation on the staffing efficiency of the existing jail facilities, and pin those numbers down adequately as to what they ought to be, and also evaluate two facilities versus one in terms of staffing. Now, the reason that's important, because if you're paying roughly $60,000 a year in salary infringes to someone, that costs $300,000 for every 24/7 post, which takes roughly full-time equivalent. If you extend that over a life cycle, and say your option saves you two posts, that could save you $16.2 million in lifecycle costs, which then also puts facility costs in perspective. Okay? Well, once we've got all the information about what we want to do, who we're doing it with, and why we're doing it, we'll develop a set of preliminary space estimates by component for sheriff's space, for jail space, and also what we can identify as shared space, where we can have some savings by sharing operations. At this stage, we're not yet doing a detailed space program, because it would be a waste of money to do so. If we have, for example, five different options that we're looking at, we want estimates of space, because if we do detailed space program for each one, the programs could wildly differ, and it could take a lot of time and money to produce it. But based on our experience, we can reasonably estimate what the square footages are for option assessment purposes. Okay? Once we have our space estimates and our concepts and our staffing pinned down, that's the time to start looking at facility concepts for feasibility testing, to verify staffing impacts, to do cost estimating, and to do option selection. And this example here is from DeKalb County, Illinois, we've been working with them, and this work was done in 2012, where on the right, you see in the colors there, basically, those are the components of new space that they need, and we're showing the scale of it to see how it fits on the site that they have, to see if it's in fact feasible and would work. To the left is the existing floor plan, and the spaces you see in magenta are actually To the left is the existing floor plan, and the spaces you see in magenta are actually spaces that were repurposed because of the things that we were adding. So any concept that we do, not, especially if it's in addition terms, not only has to talk about what new space would be, but how does the old space work, and how should it change to work? Okay? Cost estimates, everybody wants to, is there anybody here who would not want to know what any of these things cost? Is this the part we should just skip? But cost estimates are a critical master planning task, and the way, I think, we have developed over time probably the most comprehensive set of linked tools to do cost estimating. The top two pages you see in the upper corner on the left and with the green notation, one is a construction and project cost form. It automatically sends that data over to a finance project cost form where you can input duration and interest rate and come up with annual payments and total payments over time. The red outlined worksheets with the red tags would be, is a staffing cost worksheet that we do based on the staff numbers that we estimate for a given option. That data is then sent to the 2B, which is a lifecycle operation cost where we integrate not only the staff costs, but regating utilities costs, non-staff costs like contract services, food, and so forth. And then all of that is sent to the last sheet that's in the foreground there, which is what we call the total lifecycle cost. And it's there where we can be pretty specific what the cost of an option is over the long term, which is, in my mind, is really the best way to look at costs. It's not just this year's first-year annual cost, it's not just this year's payment or the total cost of a building, it's to put them in terms that you can measure over time and budget for. And it's at this point usually that when people get those costs, that's when they can say, well, I like option one, but there's no way I can pay for it, and that's when you start breaking it into plausible phases. Okay? Once we have an option selected, that's the time for the detailed space programming. And as you can see, this is a list from just one component in this example, it's from the healthcare housing pod that we programmed for Will County, Illinois, and you can see, well, you probably can't see now that I look at it, it's pretty far away, but if you look at your, maybe it's in your, you can see it in your handout, but it's very specific. So we're talking about things like negative pressure cells, there'll be four of them, and each one is 140 square feet, and each one has a shower in it, and it has a filtering system and blah, 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 it's very detailed, which is why I say you don't want to do that level of work until you've chosen your option, because once you've done this work, you're ready to design a building. Reports and presentations, what we propose to you is that we do interim reports along the way to build upon, and we, this gives you opportunities for early input that leaves you with no surprises about what we're doing, and then we don't proceed until an interim report is basically accepted. At the end, we do a pre-final report to document all the findings and make sure we're all good to go. And in this case, because I think the facilities are visual, and it's something you wrestle with a long time, what I propose we do is what I call a hosted tour. When we're at that pre-final stage, that if you're willing, we go with you over to the jails, and we point out so you can see what it is that's wrong with it, what we think is bad, and what needs to be changed about those things, and I think it'll be a lot easier to connect to the different options and see what it is that we're thinking about at that point. And then obviously, final reports, which would culminate with presentations that involve PowerPoint like we're doing tonight and handouts. Okay? Ability to relate, this is your fourth thing, ability to relate to project requirements. Very quickly, I think probably the best way to prove that point is that we have projects that, where we did exactly what you're asking us to do right now. This is Waukesha County, Wisconsin, was a jail renovation addition. You can see in the lighter colored forms in the big diagram there, that's the new stuff, the darker forms are the existing facilities we worked around. And as I mentioned to you before, because of the costs, this was broken into phases. That's why there's A, B, and C, because the whole cost was not something they could bite off at one time, so we basically broke it down into doable phases. But this one featured brand-new intake space, brand-new booking intake area, a specific mental, medical health, housing pod, and new healthcare exam areas. Okay? Will County, adult detention, this is probably one of our, I mentioned we had a long relationship. The first work we did with them was in 1985, where we did a master plan and a program for new jail facilities, originally 320 beds, kind of really right near your current size range, and it was the first direct supervision facility in the state of Illinois, and because we did that facility, the state changed its standard. If you read the jail standards, they now allow direct supervision in the standards. That didn't occur until that project there. But in 2005, they asked us back, and we added beds, and we focused on a new intake area, which if you look in the diagram just over Deb's head there, the green on the right side is the brand-new intake area with new Sallyport with internal parking, and we also added new housing, and that's on the left in the blue. And by the way, the building was designed to accommodate that expansion. There isn't a building we've designed that was not able to accommodate expansion. That's just been kind of a golden rule of all the stuff that we've done. And in the yellow area on the far, in the bottom left, and then also the diagram in the right, the floor plan in the right, that's their new healthcare, mental and medical healthcare pod, which is immediately adjacent to a new healthcare exam center.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, Sheriff, thank you very much. Winnebago County, Wisconsin, jail and Sheriff's facility, we, this was a new Sheriff's facility and a new jail of 350 beds, again, in your size range, and we consolidated law enforcement and their secure jail operations. One thing that wasn't consolidated was they already had a second detention facility elsewhere. In 2011, we did a study basically doing one of the things that we're going to be doing here, which is evaluating whether it was wise to keep those two facilities separate or whether it made more sense to bring it together. In the end, the answer there was to bring it together, because even though the facility solution was more expensive, the savings that they got in staff and operations there, I can't say that that would happen here, but there argued for the fact of consolidation. Okay? And Dodge County Sheriff's Office, one of the things we might face is the challenge of renovation. You know, the answer in part for the sheriffs may be renovation. This was a project where we did a renovation of a 1985 courthouse that won a design award but couldn't be expanded and didn't function very well, which kind of tells you how design awards work sometimes. But at any rate, it actually was a pretty neat project. We found that courtrooms turned out to be perfect places for training, spaces, and E-911 operations, largely because they had high ceilings and a big, large clear span, just like this space did. Okay?
Chuck, finally, we know the issues involved here, we read the newspapers, we stay involved in what's going on, we're all locals, so we know what's, some of the talk is. We've got engineers on our teams that have, on our team that has been involved in these facilities before. Dennis's firm has monitored the jail conditions since the late 70s. Finally, it's, I don't know if we mentioned, probably 90% of the work will be done by people that live here in Champaign County. So we will live with these solutions. We can't go back and hide somewhere from decisions we've made or recommendations we made, and we definitely, like you, want the best and the most cost-efficient facility we can. Finally, just in summary, just the last couple of minutes here, I hope we've proven that you're getting firms here that have lots of local experience, lots of specialized experience. You're seeing the work team here, not just the interview team, but the people that are physically doing the work and working with you all. There's a definition of a, of an expert that he has to live at least 50 miles away. Hopefully, we've shot a hole in that theory tonight, because Dennis is a stone's throw away, he sought after nationally for this kind of planning, and we're fortunate to have him here in Champaign County. Finally, he showed you examples dealing with exactly the same kind of issues we understand are involved here with Champaign County. We very much want to be your planners and programmers for this facility, and we'll entertain
Thank you very much. We'll start, James hasn't had a chance to speak this evening, James.
Yeah, on several occasions, you used examples of projects that you're working on that are in our size range. I thought the numbers that you gave for those seem to be much larger than what we currently seem to need and where our trending is going. So can you bring those two, that conflicting information together?
Sure, yeah. Well, I don't think it conflicts, like, I gave the example of Will County, and the initial facility was 320 beds, you have 313 right now. Winnebago County was 357 beds, you have 313 right now. So even though there's a few beds difference, it's, you know, in the jail world, you know, there are kind of levels, you get in the facilities that are the 50-bed size, you get in the facilities that are the 5,000-bed size, and then there's that middle group that's in that 300 range, so. And in the Waukesha County example, we were adding 270 beds to that.
So how many beds are at Will County now?
Will County now is 952, I believe.
Okay, I don't consider that in our size range.
Well, now it isn't. It originally was, the original concept was.
Thank you.
Passy.
Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. My first question, I'd like to hear you talk about how you integrate the citizens of the community into this process, you didn't talk much about that. And second, you did allude a bit about thinking ahead on designs, and I'd like to hear what your major suggestion is for the county so that in two to three decades, we're not having the same situation we're presently in. Thank you.
Yeah, in terms of, you know, I talked about the, you know, the theme of our company, you know, basically being collaborative, you know, to have the involvement of the users and the, the owners, that's always, to me, the starting point. The people that use the facility have to be integrally involved, and so do the owners. Now, insofar as the citizens, to be honest with you, we're happy to be involved at any level that you want, and I think one of the advantages of us being here, it's quite easy to be involved in lots of different things. But we also want your guidance as to what that should be, because technically speaking, we do think of this as your project, and so we do need your involvement guide. So that's part of what that kickoff meeting, you know, might be that we talk about and what that first step of the process is, of making sure that we're all together on the same page before we launch out. That's the time, to me, that we actually set a game plan of what levels of involvement do we want to have and who do we want to have that with, you know, whether that's town meetings. We certainly reach out to the public by reaching out to all of you, because I assume you all communicate with your constituents. We know that every one of these meetings is public and open, but we certainly can go well beyond that, really, but we need your guidance to set a tone as to what you want us to do and with whom. I don't know if that answers your question. And let's see, the other question you asked about designs and not, yeah, it's an interesting question, you know, when you, there's a couple of levels at which to answer that. One, when we talk about a facility and not having to revisit it, you know, two to three decades from now, you know, one thing that comes to my mind right away is that maintenance question. You know, one of the reasons we're doing this now is that we know we have a lot of fundamental problems at those buildings that we have to address, especially the downtown jail, and not to be judgmental, but to some degree, that may be an issue of not having maintained them, and I've seen that over and over again. So if we don't want to revisit that question, then I think we also need to talk about good preventive maintenance program as part of your budget. I'm not trying to tell you what to do with your budget, but I've seen this more than I'd like to see it. Now, insofar as whether the concepts of the facility last, concepts do change, and to the greatest degree possible, you want design concepts that are flexible and changeable. So when we look at the different types of housing units as an example, we also ask the question of are they interchangeable with different types of classifications? So if the populations change, which they do, and which you have experienced with the medical and mental health, for example, they have a greater shot of being reused for a different purpose at a later time. I don't know if that helps answer your question. Yeah?
Stan? In some of your design and work that you've done, have you been able to incorporate any outreach programs instead of building more beds, so to speak, to a jail or renovating beds? Have you been able to have the community give some input to where maybe you have a work release program somewhere?
Yeah.
And when I'm saying that, the only thing that we also have to be mindful of, that no matter what we do, there's going to be some, some budget cost to it because of staff and rent and what have you, but I'm just, I didn't hear much of you had tried to take a look at that, like a day work center or offsite or anything like that.
Yeah, well, the reason we didn't talk about it wasn't part of your scope in your RFP, you didn't ask for us to, to address that issue. And we assume that that's actually was the point of the study that you had, that finished up a year ago.
Right.
That's what it was trying to address on your behalf, so I didn't see that as part, we can certainly talk about that, because we've done many projects where it's, it's been that entire comprehensive look. You know, that's, you know, in essence, what we had proposed before was that, you know, you start all these processes by figuring out what numbers of beds that you use, and that is in part a system question. But that's what I assume that you got done with the last study.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just seeing if you'd worked in that avenue, and then the follow-up.
Yeah, quite a bit, as a matter of fact. In fact, we might have worked ourselves out of some business, that Winnebago example that I gave you, Winnebago County, part of the question there was, do we need to make that addition that they had us look at? And we actually found ways for them to avoid that for 15 years. So we probably talked ourselves out of some work, but, but there were things that they were doing there that we spotted when we did really detailed data breakdowns. For example, just as a quick example, one of the things they were doing was the state, because it lacked funding and was cutting its probation staff, was using the jail as a default probation center. And they were radically ramping up the jail population as a consequence. Well, we'd also worked in Milwaukee County where there was a law dispute about that actually happening, and most of the state didn't know it, but the sheriff in Milwaukee County actually won a suit and then won an appeal against the state that said that while the state law actually makes you hold probation offenders, you don't have to hold them if it overcrowds your facility and jeopardizes its safety. So what we basically did is we got in discussions with the probation people, and we said, here's the deal, you know, you've got 90 of your kind of, 90 of your folks in here, but that's not going to last. As our, we're not going to overcrowd our jail, and as our population ramps up, your guys are going, and you're just going to have to find another place for them. And by doing that, we delayed the need to do the facility side.
Okay. And I guess, you know, looking at the different, what you presented to us, I, being in construction and knowing a little bit about it, and I know you're going to look at the downtown facility, but the cost sometimes to rehab almost equals what you're going to put in building new, if you have the ground.
Yeah.
Because of the demolition and then the rehab of what you're going to do, and then modernize it with the codes that are in, in play now, am I correct?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. In fact, if you ever read our jail design guide or get ahold of it, which you can.
I'm going to get it tonight.
All right, the NIC, it's free, it's on a PDF. We have a chapter in there that actually addressed that question, because as I was doing technical assistance at the university and going around studies, I kept getting asked questions like, well, we have this Nike site, can we turn it into a jail? We have a grain silo, can we turn it into a jail? And if you really break, and this, this chapter does it, when you break down the cost of the jail, what you find is only about 25% of the cost is in the skin of the building. Yet that's what everybody sees, they see that old hospital, they see that old school that looks stout, and they say, my gosh, this ought to be a no-brainer, we can make a jail out of this. But the devil's in the details, it's when, and you're in construction, you know, it's when you get inside that building and you start gutting that building, and you start trying to run plumbing lines under established concrete floors, redo the ventilation systems, you know, add load, which, you know, jail construction has a heavy load, you wind up at the same cost or more by the time it's over, and you usually wind up with a much weaker facility design, because the shape of that building is dictating your design as opposed to the design you need to get the job done.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? All right, I'm going to ask the final question, I guess. I've asked it of the three other companies, right, Mr. Gleason? You've been here quite a bit now.
Should he answer it?
Maybe we should ask him who he chooses for this program. Litigation.
Yeah.
In the last 10 years, I mean, you know, we've had problems with a nursing home, as you know.
Right.
You've been here, so you've seen it.
Right.
How is your company stacked up when it comes to that situation?
Well, I hate to answer this question for fear of jinxing myself, so knock on Teflon or whatever here. 34 years, never been sued at all, let alone successfully.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We still have some time, would you like to, we've got about nine or 10 minutes, I gave everybody some extra time.
Yeah.
If you have anything else you'd like to share with us, anything of the gentleman in the back who might want to share anything, it's certainly up to you, if not, we can close the presentation.
And you don't, you're not counting Jim, right?
Okay, we don't want to hear from him again.
All right, you heard me.
Did you want any bonus slides? Did this come up?
Well, we have some bonus slides, but you know, and I'll defer you this on, I mean, if you let me talk about jails, odd as that may sound, I will talk your ear off. if you let me talk about jails, odd as that may sound, I will talk your ear off. However, I know this has to have been a long night. And in deference to our audience, if you'd like to wrap it up 10 minutes early, that's fine.
Thank you. Everyone okay on that? All right, Mr. Kimmy, thank, Mr. Ristef.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in this evening.
Thanks.